Welcome everyone, thank you for joining us today. For those that are here joining us in our chambers and those that are joining us via Zoom. Today is our City of Solid Ed Joint City Council Successor Agency, Housing Authority and Successor Housing Agency regular meeting of Wednesday, November 15 of 2023. So again, thank you everyone for joining us. Just a couple of notes in terms of how you can join today's meeting and participate and make public comments. Join the meeting via Zoom. The meeting ID is located on the agenda for today's meeting. That's 851-911-89805. You can also join by telephone. It's 1669-900-6833. This meeting has also been streamed live via Facebook. Please make sure we're not accepting any comments there. And we do have a translator for today's meeting. So thank you. With that, I'll call this meeting to our practice, okay? And can we get real copies?
There, I have the last bit.
Here.
Mary Coaten Benjamin Jr.
Sure.
Councilmember Maria Farley-Ho.
Here.
Councilmember Fernando Cabrera. That's it. We do have each one.
Okay, thank you. Now, councilmember Cabrera is out. Yeah, I know we had did mention he was having surgery and it was planning a little bit late. So he might be able to join us today. So we will move on to the next item on the agenda, which is public comment on closed session items. Now for today, we do have three closed session items. At this time, any member of the public can address the council. You shall have three minutes. Please be brief and to the point. So do we have any public comments on closed session items? And the closed session items are on the agenda? Should I read them?
Um, yeah, just, just conduct the whole thing and just say that. Well, I can actually. So the first closed session item is a consultation with the attorney regarding the claim of AT&amp;T. The second item is the pending litigation, which is the WC claim of NGA. And number three is the city council has been considered personnel matters pursuant to Governor Code Section 549-571, which is the city manager evaluation.
Thank you. So at this time, do we have any public comments on closed session items? For those that are joining us via Zoom, via bichingers. Okay, see none. Then I will take it out to those that are joining us via Zoom. Are there any public comments? Okay, see none. Then we'll close the public comment portion of this, of this section. And then we will now recess to closed session and we'll return at 6:30 for our open public meeting. Thank you.
Thank you everyone, thank you as we are now.
Okay, no more echo?
Okay, first, thank you. Well, thank you all of that are joining us again, where are we convening from our closed session? And I will turn it over to our city attorney for a report out.
Okay, mayor and council on item number one, which was a pending litigation matter, the council conferred with attorney and the claim of AT&amp;T and recommended denial. On item number two, there's a also a conference with the attorney regarding a workers' comp claim, the council approved a settlement figure and provided direction to legal counsel, no other reportable action taken. Then item number three, direction was just provided to legal staff on the city manager evaluation, which will be upcoming in, I think, January. No other reportable action taken.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to our next item, Pledge of Allegiance. And if I can have Pauline Thomas see lead us on the Pledge of Allegiance, then we can outstanding up.
Okay, very salute.
Thank you, Pauline. Okay, so at this time, do we have any additions or modifications to the agenda?
We have one, we are adding a proclamation for shop local and small this Saturday, which will take place on the 26th of November.
Okay, so we need to make the motion to approve. Okay, so I have a first and a second, all in favor say aye. Aye, any opposed, any extensions, okay, motion carries unanimously. Okay, so at this time, we'll move on to our public comment portion of the meeting. Again, if you are joining us here in the chambers, you do have three minutes to make public comments on items, some items that are not on the agenda, but are of public concern to the council. We do have three minutes again for making public comments, if you're here or joining us via Zoom, please make sure that the comments are to the point, to the items of concern and that they don't get personalized. Okay, so at this time, I will open up to anyone that's here in our chambers, if there's any public comments on items not on the agenda. Okay, there are no public comments? And items not on the agenda?
I don't know if I can say this, but my name is Maria Sanchez, and I'm here to tell them about your reconsideration of the five districts. As we all know, they collected 1,400,000, almost 1,400,000, for the referendum. And it's obvious that it's going to go to the polls, it's going to happen. And my petition is to prevent that cost to the city. That they reconsider and vote for the four districts. Thank you.
Thank you, and we do translations.
So, really quick, basically, the petition is to reconsider the five districts as no, they're having a referendum that has already passed. There are over 1,300 signatures have been collected and the very likelihood that it will go on ballot and the board will approve it will happen. So, in order to avoid those costs, we should just repeal the five districts and move back to the four districts.
Okay, any other comments from those joining us in the chambers? Okay, so we'll move on to those that are joining us via Zoom. Do we have any public comments from those joining us via Zoom? And Stephen, I can't see the participant.
Okay, so I've got one person with her hand up, Monica.
Okay, Monica, you can unmute yourself.
Unmute.
Good evening, council, good evening, community members, mayor. My name is Monica Andrade, and I am also here to support the council to reconsider and rescind ordinance 765. Do right, you know, this was a clear and message that the community has rejected the council's approval of the five district map. Avoid costs because we are already spending money. And to do right, to do the right thing and put in place the four districts.
Thank you, Monica, I know we were clear, your internet was a little spotty, so we heard, I think, the main portion of it. But thank you just to make sure that, you know, it was, the internet was spotty. Okay, any additional comments on those joining us via Zoom? Okay, so with that, then we will close the public comment portion of the agenda today. And then we have next on our, do we have any random public comments? Okay, so we have no random public comments, so we will move on to our next item on our agenda, which is our youth council report. And I really have a report, a random report that was in our packet, so I will turn it over to Mrs. Spencer.
Yes, good evening, council, this is Montel, community engagement manager. I will be brief, the youth commissioners were not able to be here tonight. We would like to introduce them, but we have, we will have them at the next meeting. But just to be brief, this is the first year that we have two youth commissioners that are paid, they're acting like paid interns coming in here 10 hours per week. And, you know, getting to know how the city functions, a lot of their time has been spent on supporting the general plan. They have been able to support us with tabulating information on the housing elements. And it's really cool to see youth learning about overall what the city is, but also helping us get that youth perspective as we do outreach on the general plan. So, just, you know, wanted to ensure you that they started about three weeks ago. They'll be here 10 hours per week, and, you know, they'll be able to give you a more comprehensive report in the next meeting.
Thank you, and I reported in the packet in case anyone has any questions on that. Okay, so we'll move on to our next item on the agenda, which is council presentations. And today we have three presentations, two proclamations, three proclamations and a presentation for today. So, we will begin with our first proclamation. And that's a proclamation of the city council, the city of Salada proclaiming October 2023rd as National Breast Cancer Awareness Month. And although we know that this usually happens in October, we wanted to make sure that we brought it forth and we weren't able to do it in October, but we wanted to make sure that we recognize Breast Cancer Awareness Month. And I just want to share a few of the language in the proclamation. So where the American Cancer Society recommends annual breast cancer screenings with mammograms starting at age 40. Whereas American Cancer Society estimates that in 2023, about 43,000, over 43,000 women will lose their lives to breast cancer. And the breast cancer remains the foremost cause of mortality among women, especially African-American and Latina and Hispanic women. Whereas many organizations continue to search for a cure through vital research and physicians, public health professionals and advocates continue to educate the community about the awareness and innovative advancements in early detection and treatment. Now therefore be proclaimed that the Salida City Council on behalf of the city of Salida and all residents does acknowledge October as Breast Cancer Awareness Month and urge all residents to join on this worldwide cause to prevent breast cancer and support those courageously battling the disease and many survivors. So we don't have, we don't, usually we'll have someone come and receive the proclamation. But just, yeah, I just want to make a couple of comments on this. I just want to thank all of the organizations that work to raise awareness on breast cancer and obviously early detection and mammograms. And I just want to share, my mother is a breast cancer survivor. Two years ago, we almost lost her to breast cancer. And if it were not for all of the medical advances, you know, we have her now with us today. So I encourage especially women that were always busy and always putting this aside to make sure that we take care of our health, that's a priority, so we can take care of our community and we can take care of our family. And so I will open it up to the council if there's any comments.
Yes, just a PSA, just wanted to remind women to get screened. And it's recommended from age 40 to age 74. And also if there is family history of breast cancer, you definitely want to speak with your physician and get what's it called, screening sooner. Also, something that I just wanted to point out, that men can also get breast cancer. And there is, I believe, it's a 1%, one out of 100 men, so definitely for men. I know it's taboo, but if you notice any changes, you know, go get checked. That's all, thank you.
Yes, and I would also like to mention is that my mother, as well as a breast cancer survivor, she was found, she is 50 years old. And thank the Lord, she's still with us, she's 87 now. And because it, you know, I have three daughters in my family, my wife, and so to get checked and catch it early and it is survivable. It is, and I've seen her mom and son with what she went through. So, you know, thank you so much for what you guys do out there and putting that awareness out. And I will be taking on on an annual basis because, you know, cancer is not a nice thing.
Yeah, thank you, so we will put this here, and then we'll make sure that we get it out. So we have our next proclamation, it's a proclamation of the city council, the city of Salida proclaiming October 2023 as National Domestic Violence Awareness Month. And again, I know we had a lot going on in October, we want to make sure, I know we're doing it now, but it's an opportunity for us to make sure we don't forget also, this is really critical. So let me just, again, a couple of wherethis from this proclamation. Whereas the month of October 2023 is recognized as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. And whereas domestic violence, which no boundaries of age, gender, socioeconomic status or race continues to inflict harm upon our community, causing physical, emotional and psychological suffering. causing physical, emotional and psychological suffering to countless individuals. Whereas it is our collective responsibility to raise awareness about domestic violence, provide support to our survivors and work tirelessly to prevent further incidents. Whereas the resilience encouraged displayed by survivors of domestic violence serves as an inspiration for all of us, showcasing the strength of the human spirit. Whereas local organizations such as Lideres Campesinas and the Salida Police Department have joined together to provide critical resources and support for those affected by domestic violence. Now therefore, we are proclaiming the Salida City Council, we affirm this commitment to ending domestic violence and call upon all residents to stand united against domestic violence, to break the cycle of abuse and to create a community where everyone feels safe and valued. Thank you. And we do have representatives from Lideres Campesinas who would like to come to the front to accept this. And then also our chief, Damon Wasson, who also has been really instrumental in the support. We know we have a victim services advocate, Elizabeth. I don't know if she's, I don't think she's here today. But chief, if you want to come to the front as well, so we can present this proclamation. And council, do you want to take a picture to present the proclamation to them? Awesome. Thank you. So yes, do we have any that want to say a few words?
Briefly, thank you so much for the proclamation, thank you for the support, thank you to the city, thank you to the Salida Police Department. You know, we know that we, domestic violence has not been completely eliminated, but we will continue to fight and together with the city and Salida, we will keep that fight.
Thank you. Yeah. So council, do we have any comments?
In my former position as a parole agent, oftentimes I come in to contact the victims of domestic violence. And one of the things that's lacking, and I see as a council, that we need to challenge ourselves, are shelters and safe places for homes for these victims of, from ethnic views. The children, the wives, oftentimes it can lead to death if they don't get a safe a safe place to stay and get away from the perpetrator. So as a council, I would like to challenge us to try to do something within our community that could give the chief another resource to maybe help out those that are experiencing that here in our town. And oftentimes it's one word, you know, reach out to your friends or to a neighbor or somebody that you can trust to share that information. It's hard because with us, with the Hispanic families is, well, it's private. It's our business. It's a family. It's not, it's not, you know, domestic violence is one where you need to share that information, get out of that situation because it can be bad. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Yes, I was just going to say in one of my previous industry, I was in the housing industry. And as a supervisor, a lot of the resident, I guess, issues had to do with domestic violence. And I want to say unfortunately, maybe 80, 90% of the time, the women would take, would take them back. And they would risk their housing even for their children just to go back to their abuser. So I, you know, definitely think it's important what you ladies are doing. I appreciate it. It's definitely unfortunately needed. Also, you know, chief, thank you for what you on the department do. And, you know, with that said, I really do think that we should have a safe area or a safe home here in Salida. And what I would like to ask of our staff is if moving forward on our, on our police department reports that we could start adding domestic violence, because I don't think I saw it on there. And the reason I think this is important is because it will help us to be able to get grants and start working towards making that a goal. So, you know, I'm really hoping that that's something that becomes a reality, that we could get a grant. And I think if we work with the police department, you know, with you ladies, the Lideres Campesinas and with our council and our staff, you know, I think we can make that a reality. So thank you for your work.
Yeah, thank you, council, for those comments. And I want to just note that we do have a domestic violence report that's provided to us. It's part of the victim services report that we get. But I know the numbers because I look at those on a monthly basis and the numbers are really low. So, you know, to the point that was mentioned, that sometimes it's not reported because there's a lot of fear and because of a lot of other things. So I think the numbers that we see are really under counts. But to raise awareness, I think that's really critical. So we can really have more of the true numbers that are reported to us on a monthly basis through our victim services advocated. You know, just in terms of the challenge, I think it's a council challenge, but also an individual challenge for us to be able to raise awareness. I know, I for one, just want to say, I was on the board of the YWCA several years ago. And last year I had to, I had to get off because of a lot of other commitments. But the YWCA had been working with the City of Salida, had met with the chief and previously with our city manager to be able to look at how do we bring a shelter here because we know it's needed in South County. We also at one point worked with Alfredo Diaz Infante from Chispa, who was, this was something that was really critical to him. And he was willing to work with the city to be able to look at one of the homes that was here to be converted into a shelter. Unfortunately, he passed away thereafter and the conversations kind of got lost from there. But I think this is an important time to be able to come back and look at, you know, how we as individual council members support it. But also if, you know, this is important that we really make that part of our goals and really look at what are the funding resources that are available, that we start working with our county supervisors. We start working with the state as well in terms of the funding that's coming. Because that shelter, based on the numbers when I was on the board of the YWCA and based on what we have here in Salida, they're, you know, they're pretty daunting. And so it's important for us to be able to do that. And I thank our victim services advocate for the work that she does do for our families that are here. But we need to raise awareness and that our residents know also that we do have someone on our city staff that does work with families and provides them that guidance that they need during that difficult time. So thank you. Okay, so with that, thank you again to Lideres Campesinas and thank you again, chief, for everything that your department does as well. So this is our last proclamation. And this is a proclamation for Shop Local and Small Business Saturday, which is going to be really important as we get toward the holiday season. Whereas local businesses are the backbone of our community comprising a vital part of Salida's economy embodying the spirit of entrepreneurship, innovation and hard work. Whereas local businesses enrich our community by creating local jobs, preserving neighborhoods and fostering unique and vibrant cultural identity. Whereas the City of Salida has created programs to support local businesses, such as the facade program and the small business assistance and improvement grant. Whereas our commitment to recognize and patronize these local establishments contributes to the sustainability and resilience of our economy. Whereas Small Business Saturday was created in 2010 to support small businesses recover from the Great Recession and continue to be a vital influence of businesses, continue to recover from the COVID-19 pandemic. And whereas by joining together on Small Business Saturday, we have the opportunity to show our appreciation for the dedicated entrepreneurs who invest their passion and dedication in making our City of Salida a better place. And now therefore be proclaimed by the council, the City of Salida, that on the 25th of November of 2023, a Small Business Saturday and designate November through December as a kickoff to shop local for the holiday season. And I encourage all of our residents to show their support of our local businesses each and every day by shopping, dining and engaging in our diverse range of businesses that we have here in City of Salida. So we will present this proclamation to Tensia Vargas, who can accept this on behalf of the Economic Development Department as a coordinator who has been really instrumental in advocating for CDBG funds. And we've supported our businesses through a lot of the allocation of the CDBG funds and working on a lot of the communication and strategies to best engage our businesses to make sure that they're viable and that we can continue to support them as well. So Tensia, on behalf of the city council, we'd like to present this feeling. Well, thank you, everyone. So now we will move on to our next item. And that's a brief presentation by Hartnow College, Selena's Valley Promise Vice President of Development and Advancement. This is Jackie Cruz. Welcome to the City of Salida.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and honorable city council members, city manager. Buenas tardes. Good evening to all the public. It's really an honor to be here to talk about the Selena's Valley Promise program. We have some data that we want to share with you, but first and foremost, we want to thank you for investing in your youth with your youth council model, which has become a model for the rest of all the communities as well and for really believing in this opportunity for the students. So I'm going to go ahead and let's see, hopefully I don't have any. Let's see. Okay, perfect. It's a little bit late, but I think you just will do. Okay, first I want to talk about the goals of the promise. And I want to distinguish between AB19, which is the California Promise Program. It's a grant program to help moderate income students, students of a little bit more means to be able to have free college. And when that came out, a lot of people thought, well, if you're already doing a promise and it's free college, why are you doing a Selena's Valley Promise? So again, AB19 is about the moderate income student. And the Selena's Valley Promise model is a comprehensive model to help all of our students, regardless of their income. Our low-income students and our moderate income students and everybody that comes to Hartnow College first time and full-time students. So our goals are to have our students complete vocational training or transfer to a university, support economic recovery in our communities and to advocate and empower our students to be part of the workforce and to support economic mobility. The requirements are for the student to be part of, resident or Californian must be enrolled first time in college and must be attending 12 units or more. And we also ask them to build out the classes so that we can get other resources as well as the promise support. And then we also ask them to be part of the leadership institute, which provides them the opportunity for wraparound services and other services that will help them be successful in health, a lot of the know-how, a lot of the social capital that our students need to have as they're going in, because it's an intimidating process to go into college for the first time. And we recognize that and want to help our students navigate the system, the complex system that we are. It also provides students with professional development workshops and mentorships. The year, second year of the program, it helps with their mentorship and tuition for the entire two years of their program. They must at least maintain a 2.0 GPA. And just as a point of reference, 85% of our students are coming from low-income families, as stated here in the slide. I am going to put the next one here. Okay, again, restating the program benefits, two years of free tuition, regardless of their income, a laptop, or if they already own a laptop, we will provide them with a scholarship or textbook. And it's the equivalent. So the same money that they would get through a laptop for the equivalent cost, we give to the student for textbook support. The leadership program is probably one of the most transformative in which they participate with a cohort and they get a lot of professional development. And then we have quarterly workshops for them to sustain and maintain as a family, as a unit, as a cohort, so they can support each other. Also through this, we've been able to build our faculty members as more champions, getting involved beyond the class with our students. And we believe that builds community and again, making sure that our students feel connected to us, supported and really really basically building a relationship with the faculty beyond that class time. The first year of the program, the students are matched now with a peer mentor, someone that's more of their age, you know, cool like them. And the second year, they get paired with us, like industry people, people that are already in the workforce. So that first year is to just get them acquainted and familiar with what is a mentorship relationship, right? A lot of our students come in, they've never had a mentor or a professional mentor. And so that first year is sort of easing it with a peer mentor and second year with a professional mentor. Just a little bit of data on the enrollment, the first year we launched this program, we had 620 students. Then we grew to about 1,000 students and we got hit by the impact of COVID. And we kind of, you know, went down to 918 and then up again to 959. And then now we are at a record of 1,260 students in the Selena's Valley Promise. As far as Salida goes, we had a peak year in the second year with 107 students. And this year we're kind of back on that upswing to 88 students that are coming from Salida. One point of reference that you may want to know is the funds that you have invested will only support your Salida students and it's a pro rider. It's $100 per student, but we have a county match, so it kind of brings down that investment thanks to the county providing some matching funds. But just wanted to mention that, that you're supporting your graduates for your local community. This is a little bit about the mentorship program. This is some data that we have on the number of mentorship matches, how many conversations our students have with their mentors, both through in-person conversations and in text messaging. And so we capture all of this data and this is to show you that while we were affected by COVID and that really took us, made some impact, we're back on the upswing. And in 23, 24, you could already see that we're doubling the numbers of students matched with mentors, which is great. Okay, and then in terms of impact, since we already had our first cohort graduate, we actually have had two cohorts tracking with this. The yellow bar is the students that are not in the Selena's Valley Promise that are full-time and first time. So it's an apples-to-apples comparison. It's an ANOVA, as they call it in the research world, apples-to-apples comparison. So we can see here that the promise is having a 13 percentage point difference between the students that are in the program and those that are not in the program. That was for the 2019 cohort and then the cohort that came in the next year during COVID. You could see here again, the impact of COVID, but still a significant difference between the non-Selena's Valley Promise and the Selena's Valley Promise. And then this is just some data around workforce. So our students that graduate, you can see here where in the yellow bar, it's the before they, they complete our programs. And then after they complete their programs and you can see here how full-time employment really goes up by over 20 percentage points. So moving the student into the workforce. There's another slide that is in your packet, but it's not showing here that shows that there, once they finish our programs, the difference in wages is about $10 per hour. So their wages go from about $15 to $25 per hour. the difference in wages is about ten dollars per hour. So their wages go from about fifteen to twenty-five dollars per hour, which is pretty significant. And then lastly, did I make it in my seven minutes? Ooh, great. So this is the, the number of supporters that we have. These are all the investors, if you will, in this program, both private and public, in all of the cities. I'm so happy to announce that Selena's was sort of, they were holding out, but they're now in and everybody is a good part of this process, who really is a community supporting the students. Thank you.
Thank you, Jackie, for that presentation. And thank you for doing it in seven minutes. Thank you for providing the slides in advance as well. That helps. I'll open up to the council if there's any comments or questions, and I'll start with Basal and Gori.
Yes, I just wanted to thank you for coming and doing that presentation in those seven minutes. But, you know, most importantly, I wanted to just express that I'm, you know, honored and happy that the, the City of Solidad is investing into, into this, because really the, just with the numbers that you were showing us, it shows, you know, it's a whole wraparound program. And I love the mentorship program because it does show that, you know, it makes the student feel welcomed and feel that they're a part of something. And I think that's a lot of times what, what it is when they feel, because they don't feel they're a part of it. I'm going to have someone checking up on them. But yeah, I think it's a great program. I just wanted to, you know, say that it's an investment, not just for our youth and those that are participating in it, but it's also a huge investment for our community to be able to have them come back into our community and give back to others. Thank you.
Yeah, Jackie, and I'd like to mention as well that it's such an opportunity for our kids to experience college, will take college courses and see that sometimes it's like, well, it's not for me. But they get in there with their peers, they have support, and then it's a whole different story. It's like, yeah, I can do it. So it can make a difference in their lives. And as we know, education is the quickest way out of poverty. And they may not have support at home as far as language barriers, those type of things, but with the support from college, they end up being successful as well, and because of their determination, determination, obviously. So thank you so much. And I, I got, I was fortunate to teach one year at the Solidad High Administration of Justice Courses in the dual program. And so it was a good experience. It was a good experience, I'll say it like that. We had some really bright students. And some of the kids just there. But, but I think for the most part, I take great pride in those that excelled and wanted to take the opportunity to learn. And some said, I never even thought about going out to college. Now I'm definitely going to go to college.
Thank you for being part of that dual enrollment program. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Jackie, for the presentation. So, you know, as a, as a Hartnow College alum, I went to Hartnow for two years and was out of there by two years and was able to transfer. I didn't have all the support systems, obviously, that are available now to our students. But obviously, for me, education was transformative, so I know that's really imperative. So as was said, these support systems that are now available to really make sure that we're supporting our students. I know what I've heard from a lot of our students at Hartnow, there's still a lot of, you know, there's still a lot of challenges with transportation. There's still a lot of financial challenges. Many of them have to work as well and go to school. And so, you know, they're competing with that as well. So being able to have those support systems are really, really instrumental. So thank you for the work that's been done. I would like just to, I know some of the data you presented is more of an overall of the Valley Promise. And thank you for knowing those eighty-eight students that are coming from Solidad. But I would like to see some more data disaggregated, to really look at some of the Solidad numbers in terms of how many of those are going on to a four-year college, right? How many of those are getting certificates? And I know one of the things that we've been hearing a lot have been that education, we, as, you know, going through education, as I said, for me, it was transformative for my life, but I know it's not going to be for everyone. So there is a lot of talk about the trades and also how do we really make sure that we have those pathways for those certification programs that our students can get to a lot easier than going to a four-year or longer, but they can come out with higher-paying jobs, as some of the information you noted. So just, you know, really wanting to make sure we explore, like, how many of those are going into a four-year college? How many of those are getting certificates? And how many of those are not, you know? And kind of being able to look at that data to see what else we can do to support.
I mean, that's great. I'll make sure to follow up with you on the Saturday data for the eighty-eight students from Solidad. And well, it won't happen for the eighty-eight now, but I can look at the ones that came before that graduated and see what's happened with them.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Well, thank you to, thank you to Jackie. And just for our residents, so they know, as Jackie mentioned, Solidad is part of the Selena's Valley Promise. And every, every year during the budget process, the council does allocate funding. So every year, we have the opportunity to look at that and allocate funds for those students that come from, directly from the City of Solidad. So I think that's really critical. So our residents need to know how we're investing as well, our funding. Okay, so with that, then we'll move on to our consent calendar. And for today, we have eight items on our consent calendar. Oh, sorry, yeah, eight items on our consent calendar. So I will take it out to any members of the public that wish to pull an item from the consent calendar for discussion or comment. Okay, anyone that's joining us via Zoom would like to pull an item from the consent calendar for comment or discussion. Okay, seeing none, then I will, we get to the council to see if any of the members of the council wish to pull an item for discussion or comment. And I have item C three, and it's for comments.
Uh, C two and C three.
Okay, so so with that, then I will entertain a motion to approve all the other items with the exception of C two, C three, and C seven.
So what?
Second, the motion. If there's a motion on the floor, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Any abstain? Okay, so motion carries. So Mayor Potem, he knows C dash two.
C dash two, warrant number I dash zero two three through zero two nine. It's on page six. Thirteen thousand dollars for landscaping. City Manager was going to give some clarification regarding, regarding what areas I covered. Or what actually we were getting for that. Was it simply Orchard Park, was my question, that we're being charged for? And the warrants are off for October. So again, is that accumulation of cumulative total, or is that? I don't know. May I have that with that?
Yeah, it's my understanding that there was a repair that, or there was work that needed to be done in the bio cell. And so it represents, it's not a regular maintenance type of charge. So we can get the, the exact details of what they did for that invoice. And I'll, I'll forward it to you. Plan on doing that, but I, I found out the information and then I forgot to send you the documentation, so I.
Okay, it's I dash zero two three to I dash zero two nine, if you can do that.
Yeah.
I'd be grateful. The second one would be two zero six one seven on page eleven. I believe we did kind of explain this, but Townsend Consulting by thousand dollar.
Yes, so the city has a contract with Townsend for sixty thousand, and we pay them once a month.
Absolutely. Yeah. I, I, one oh one six, page sixteen, Johnstone, ten thousand, four twenty-one for consulting.
Yeah, that's part of our CDBG program, and it's funded through CDBG funding as part of the operation of our small business home programs.
Correct. Okay. And then the last one on this one, the warrant is I one oh three, one two three Espinosa. For four thousand nine hundred and seventy-nine, that consulting as well. I, it's page eighteen, one oh three, one two three.
I might have to get back to you. Yeah, I might want to get back to you on that one. I'll follow up for staff on that one. I'll get you the detail.
My help acronym A D P P, J S, those October twenty twenty-three.
No, I will follow up with you. Yes, I'll follow up on that one. I apologize.
Any additional items?
That was, that's it for warrants on C two, unless you have.
Yes, did you pull C two through the chair? I had a question on C two. Um, this one is for, for staff also. I don't see a page number on the top right, on, at least on my, on my end, but there's just various. Let me see, trying to look for a number here. It just has various names, and it says USA refunds, like personal names, Alvarez, Mariano, Vargas, Cardenas. Yes.
We had those before.
Oh.
Yeah, those are reoccurring. I'm trying to remember what, because I lost them in the past.
Yeah, so those are, yeah.
Page twelve, I believe.
I'm like giving it hard time finding the page numbers.
Yeah, page twelve, I finally. Yeah, I just haven't had it on the page, but yeah, I can scroll and show it.
Yeah, now I'm finding it. Okay.
And those have been reoccurring, so I know that I've asked in the past, and there was a reason why, but I can't remember off the top of my head.
Would Mike Howard know?
Oh, yeah, Mike is on the. Oh, yeah. Yeah, Mike, you're on the line. Do you know, can you just explain in terms of the USA refunds that I know are common on our on our reports, on our warrants?
Can you tell me the page number again?
Eleven, page eleven. And then under the USA refund, a correction, page twelve?
I think I'm going to have to get the, the details of those and we'll follow up with you.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
And, and Mike through the chair, possible? Mike, you know anything about the I dash one oh three, one two three, page eighteen, Espinosa, four thousand nine hundred and seventy-nine?
I don't. I was just looking at that. What I'll do is I'll pull the invoice and I'll give it to Megan, and she can forward it to the council.
Okay, thank you. Council, if you want to know this for future, let me know if you want to pull an item or have a question on that same item as well, so I can acknowledge both of you. Okay. Okay, so we'll move on to item C dash three, and that's mine. I pulled that item. So I just wanted, I have a couple of comments, and thank you for keeping us updated on the Solidad marketplace. I know that obviously there's Dutch Brothers that, you know, they're conditional, they have been conditionally approved. We also have Panda Express that's coming as well. This has been really critical for our community at this point. You know, our community has been waiting for a lot more commercial and retail to come to the city. So I want to make sure that we're providing more updated information to our community in regards to the marketplace. I've seen a lot of misinformation on this item, especially why Ross isn't coming. You know, who's to blame why Ross is here, why Ross is not here? I want to make sure that our public has accurate information that, you know, it's, it's not any of us council members, it's not me as the mayor that's saying I don't want Ross here. So I think to avoid misinformation, if we, I would like for us, for the city, to find a mechanism to be able to ensure that our residents have accurate information, or even I know Stephen has really, has been really good about putting in some landing pages where people could see what's accurate, why people are coming, what's, what's, you know, whether they're not coming. And some of that, also having an opportunity for our staff to explain some of the process of what happens when a retail store comes, you know, that the city and us as, as council members really don't have a lot of influence in that. It's really with the developer and, you know, some of the strategic work that's been done to bring some of those stores here. But I just want to make sure that we address some of that, and if we can just make sure that we provide our community with more updated and accurate information.
Yeah, and through the chair, we, we're actually working on it. I think there was a, a little snippet about Dutch Brothers breaking ground, but we can do, we're working with the departments to post more updated information. We've modified our webpage a little bit to now where it was just public notices, it's going to say news and notices, and we're going to have a lot more stories. And we can definitely elevate the, the marketplace, because I know that many of the council members have wanted to express to the public what is going on. And some of the information hasn't always, it's been difficult, because some of it is still confidential or still in the works. So we will definitely do that and make sure, and we can even, you know, come back at some point and do a presentation about where we're at. That would be really helpful. So thank you for that. And then the other item on that same C dash three, was I wanted to congratulate all of our citizens, the Fall Citizens Police Academy that had a graduation on the night. And Chief, thank you for continuing with that. I just have a request. I think I had requested this last time is if there's an opportunity for the council to attend the graduation or for the academy graduates to come to the city, so we can make sure that we're congratulating them for their investment and their time to really engage, civically engage in the City of Solidad. I think that's really important. And also, how do we support them continuing to invest their time, right? I think it's really important that as we have graduates from the Citizens Police Academy, where else are those opportunities that we as a council also can see? Is there other opportunities for us to support their continued engagement with, with the City of Solidad and helping us to improve the city? And through the chair, I think we're working together to look at a volunteer kind of acknowledgement that we can do annually that can kind of recognize the Civics Academy, the Police Civics Academy, so that's something we're also working on.
Thank you. Okay, so that's all I had. And then C dash seven, I will turn it over to Mayor Potem for comments on that.
Yes, we have representatives from the Solidad Mission Chamber here. Is he calling him? And Eva, you guys, they couldn't already have a couple of questions. First off, I want to commend both, both three of you and all the volunteers at Dingo Parade. I mean, outstanding job, great event, and, you know, we're going to continue to do this forever, hopefully, for as long as I'm on this survey. But with that said, though, the sponsorship is kind of interesting for me, because I haven't seen much activity from the Solidad Mission Chamber. Are you, is it still a functioning organization? And the reason I brought this to light was last week in my executive meeting at Center Valley Voice Store, I saw a warrant for membership of, I believe, twelve fifty. And then also, yeah, for membership to the Solidad Chamber, Solidad Mission Chamber, and then also rental payment for the billboard, which was approximately, I think, two grand. So obviously, they, it is still in existence. Are you guys meeting or?
Yeah, virtually.
Virtually. Virtually. And, and the president and the board members are who again?
Andrea, Bento, April, all still, Jeremy, Willie, Willis. And I'm all with you.
Okay, okay. And so so virtually guys meeting monthly, is that open to the public and we participate? Is that posted anywhere?
I have to double-check with our board. I don't know exactly all the rules on that right now. I don't know. I usually have our closed meetings and we have open meetings, so we have an open.
And then, and then again, it's one of those where it's an opportunity to, to see the public and see as well what's going on. Because the, the participation has been, and maybe I'm not seeing it. So correct me if I'm wrong, that the Chamber has not, Solidad Mission Chamber has not been as active, like between the parade and, you guys have been outstanding. And that's what we see, and it's kind of, well, what's else going on in the background? And the association and, and the membership fee, the little type of thing, I understand you guys filed one through C. I see you guys are up to date. You're still, you know, you're filing your taxes, which is great, because that way we're okay. But why does it matter to the council? Why does it matter to me? It's because of the fact we're asking for sponsorship or for us to participate with the parade. And again, I don't have a problem with that. I just want to make sure. I just want to make sure uh, the organization is still functioning within its uh, with regulation requirements, so that we can also uh, participate as well. Those are my questions, David.
Yeah, thank, thank you for that. I have, I have a question to our city attorney. Can we, because I know that it's not only the Mission Chamber commerce, but now we have also the Merchants Association. Um, can we add criteria to um, wh- what we need when we sponsor or what is needed? I don't even know if that's legal or not, but what is needed in terms of what we need to see from the, you know, chamber or association in regards to a board of directors, a list of meetings, um, you know, initiatives? Um, any of that?
Sure, yeah, absolutely. I mean, if you're being asked to partner up with somebody else, then I think you have the right to ask for information about the uh, entity and organization that you're partnering up with. So, you know, as long as it's clear upfront, that's what you're gonna ask for and so forth. Um, but yeah, I don't see any legal prohibition to doing that at all.
Okay, so, so we can come back and have a further discussion on that if the council would like, so that way we can make sure that there's transparency across the board and every association or business um, group that we're partnering um, is held to the same standard. Okay, so um, so with that, then I entertain a motion to move forward with item C dash two, C dash three and C dash seven.
Would the exceptionals want that they're getting back to us and then we'll put that on the next group? Is that fair? And do you have those, the list goes again for you?
No, I have them. Yeah, for me, I just, um, we are gonna be, hmm, I get, well, I'm not sure again how it works, because we're gonna be working on the logistics, but do we need to have like a, um, and we probably do just the liability insurance? That's in the.
On that? Yeah, we will. That, that's part of the, uh, the actual application and then you turn around the grant.
Okay, so can I have a motion?
So move, okay, certain of those items.
So, there is a motion on the floor. Did I make the motion? You second the motion. So all in favor, say aye. Aye? Any opposed? Any extensions? Okay, so the motion carries. Thank you, thank you. We'll answer the discussions above the Chamber of Commerce, okay?
We got one more coming.
They were separate entities, the city is all of it. Yes, okay, thank you, thank you. Okay, so we will move on then um, to the next item on our agenda, which is public hearing. And today we actually have a very busy agenda. Uh, we do have two public hearings and a lot of business items. So, we will move forward with public hearing number one. And during the public hearing process, we'll receive the staff report. We will open the public hearing. Uh, we will close the public game and then we will bring it back to council action. And so we will uh, move forward on public hearing number one, which is our SB two implementation of actions, phase three. So we've been discussing a lot of these spaces. And I will turn it over to Ariana Moore, our planning, uh, assistant planner.
Every meeting.
Um, hi, good afternoon, um, Mayor Council. Um, so I'll be presenting a um, a staff report briefly for this SB two limitation for phase three. Um, this space will um, close out the SB two grant for the zoning amendment requirements that um, were received uh, money for um, a hundred and sixty thousand dollars from the state to complete these zoning amendments and efforts to streamline and accelerate housing uh, in Solid Ed. Um, so, uh, the action being taken today or being considered is to waive reading a doctrine of only ordinance number seven fifty-seven and seven fifty-nine. Um, seven fifty-seven pertaining to um, chapter seventeen point forty-one inclusionary housing of title seventeen zoning of solid areas of the code. And then ordinance number seven fifty-nine um, pertaining to chapter seventeen point one four R three high density multifamily district and chapter seventeen point three zero industrial district um, to comply with those various zoning updates. Um, as mentioned, this is the last phase to close out the SB two grant, uh, which we received back in two thousand and eighteen. Um, these both or, uh, these ordinances are being presented to council for consideration and final adoption. Um, for ordinance number seven fifty-seven, um, these, well, actually to clarify, both of these ordinances were presented for the first hearing on October eighteenth. Um, ordinance seven fifty-seven, um, during October eighteenth meeting, city council directed staff to amend the language in the ordinance text, which conforms with concurrent development of market rate units and affordable units. Um, the proposed modification would state that the required inclusionary ownership units uh, in a multifamily rental housing project shall be constructed concurrently with market rate units. City council may approve alternate timing for a multifamily unit rental housing project when an affordable housing developer is involved through an affordable housing agreement. Um, in addition, um, that amend, that ordinance also amends the chapter to include a minimum of twelve units per acre, so minimum density, and then establishes a maximum density of twenty-two units per acre. Um, the second ordinance, which is seven fifty-nine, seven fifty-nine. Um, the proposed amendments are um, changing permitted uses in the multifamily district here in Solid Ed. This, these amendments, sorry, I think I confused the ordinances, but that establishes the minimum and maximum density. Um, or ordinance seven fifty-seven only includes um, the affordable housing and concurrent development. Um, second, um, for ordinance seven fifty-nine, uh, we are also including amendments for employee housing and a permitted use. So employee housing in industrial zone, um, district staff is proposing requiring a conditional use permit and amending all agricultural uses subject to also ACUP in order to conform with the Health and Safety Section one seven zero two one point six. So those um, amendments are being um, presented to you, you today for final adoption, a consideration and final adoption. Um, just to briefly mention, council approved resolution fifty-nine eighty-five, restorative addendum to the two thousand and five general plan. E I R prepared for the proposed amendments. Um, the document is available upon request. Um, and that concludes my presentation on these public hearings. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Thank you, Ariana. So let me take it up to the public and then I'll bring it back to the council. Are there any uh, comments from the public on item P H dash one on our public hearing number one, from any of those that are joining us here in the chambers? Okay, are there any public comments from anyone that is joining us via Zoom on our public hearing number one? Okay, seeing none, then I will close the public, oh. I will, I forgot to open the public hearing. Okay, so I took comments, I opened the public hearing just for reference of the, the, the record at seven thirty-six and no public comment, so I will close um, public hearing at seven thirty-six. And I will bring it back to the council for council uh, comment and um, action. So also, are there any questions? And I'll start with Mayor Plutem.
Um, yes, I, I have a question. Um, first of all, just wanted to thank you for all your, your hard work and your duty service promotion. Um, you know, I think this is gonna really help streamline much-needed affordable housing. Um, my question is gonna be the same question I have at the first public hearing. And then it's regarding general standard section seventeen point four one point zero five zero. Um, item C on concurrent development. Um, I had inquired back then with regards to um, the wording saying that the required inclusionary shall be constructed concurrently with market rate units and I just had asked, you know, um, back then if the units are gonna be um, if they're gonna be the inclusionary units, if we're gonna be building them based on um, on milestones or, or phases, um, construction phases, and I think it's important to me because I really don't want anything to, to halt, halt affordable housing. And I just feel that if we don't have that wording in there, and as I'm interpreting it incorrectly, um, that it might turn off some, some of our um, developers, because if we have a hundred units, um, you know, I don't think they're gonna bu- build a hun- uh, twenty market and then build twenty affordable, it might be hard for them, um, financial-wise, economically-wise. Um, it would make more sense, I believe, that they would do it kind of in milestones, like at a hun- at, at fifty, we would have ten affordable, and then at a hundred, we would have the, the twenty that are required, so um, I can't recall what you told me back then, but I don't see, you know, wording anything different on there.
Yeah, and I could speak to the beginning of that and feel free to add anything again on that, but eventually when these affordable housing agreements come before council in, in conformance with the inclusionary ordinance, um, they also have to take into the ad hoc where that discussion is taking place and the specifics are being um, proposed into how is the project spaced out? And in consideration with the development of those market rate and affordable housing units. Um, that's my understanding of the process.
So is, this might be a Megan question. So is, is the wording of how we have that on there right now, is that like standard wording kind of for them?
Yeah, so um, through the chair, um, with the partnership, the timing, the council would have the authority to establish a timing in any particular way that you would want. But when someone is building, uh, if a developer so chooses to build it themselves, um, it's going to be based on the phase, so it'll be assuming that those, it would be a percentage based on what they're building out in that phase.
Okay, so it's implied kind of or given?
Yeah, like usually, like when you're, especially when you're doing ownership housing, um, they're not gonna they, they have to incorporate the affordable housing in that phase, so they're not gonna like build one unit and then it, it doesn't work construction-wise to skip that house that's affordable and build like a broken teeth in between. They're just gonna kind of follow the line down through, and we would, wouldn't allow that anyhow. We'd say you need to follow the line through, so it will be done concurrently like that, but it doesn't necessarily mean like you know, you're building house by house, that the first one, you know, can't move forward. So it'll be based on kind of that phase. Understanding that the timing will be roughly within that same time period. That makes sense.
Yeah, that's all I have, and I am in the portable um, can, uh, housing committee as well, so I'm sure that'll come through. Okay, thank you, thank you. Yeah, th- thank you, Ariana, too. And I want to say thank you, and I want to say thank you for, um, I know this has come before us several times now, and I just want to say I, I'm more on the opposite spectrum of the concurrent development and I agree with it, because I think one of the issues I've had has been that there's been a lot of development in the past here in the city of Solid Ed, um, where there was no concurrent development. So the affordability of those homes that were supposed to be built at the same time that the market rate units were built, they were never built. Um, twenty years later, they still sit empty or moving forward, so the concurrent development in order for us to be able to also comply with some of the state legislation that's coming to really ensure that the cities are not putting barriers to um, development of affordable housing are really looked at and that we minimize those barriers that exist, because you know, I know we, obviously having gone through the housing element and having discussed it in length, that we know the need for affordable housing and the res- for the residents of the city of Solid Ed, and we also know that there hasn't been affordable housing developed um, in many years, uh, true affordable housing in the city of Solid Ed. So I think for me, the concurrent development is really important. Um, and to be able to make sure that developers that come to our city, um, also are aware of some of those criteria in terms of, you know, we have the inclusion area, it's twenty percent, so just, you know, for our residents, twenty percent is a drop in the bucket for what we really need, and um, I know that we probably need to have more, but legally we can't. Uh, but twenty percent, I don't think it's a lot. Um, and it's important that our community and us, the council, also understand that, you know, looking at our demographics, looking at our annual median households for the city of Solid Ed, which is that sixty-eight thousand, um, that it's important for us to be able to ensure that there's concurrent development. So I want to thank staff for making sure that we're putting, that we're looking at the barriers that have existed in the past and addressing those barriers and the modifications to um, to the provisions that we have before us under ordinance seven fifty-seven and seven fifty-nine. So with that, um, if we don't have, um, I moved to approve ordinance seven fifty-seven and seven fifty-nine, can we do it better?
And, and Ariana already read, but essentially the topic we do, we are weapons, so.
So there's a motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extension? Thank you so much, Ariana. Okay, so we'll move on to our next item on our agenda, which is public hearing number two. Uh, and our public hearing number two is resolution number sixty twenty-three, a resolution of the city council of the city of Solid Ed, accepting the closeout report of the city of Solid Ed's twenty nineteen, twenty twenty state community development block grant award twenty C D G one two zero eight four business assistance loan grant program and authorizing some of it all to the California Department of Housing and Community Development, and I will turn this over to Nancy Parkes.
Good evening, um, Mayor and Council. Um, so I'm here today to represent to you the um, the end report for this grant that we received. Um, just a little bit of background on the grant. Um, the city applied for this grant and it was a five hundred thousand dollar uh, application that we applied for and we got awarded through uh, twenty C D G one two zero eight four. This grant allowed um, us as a city in a crucial time where we were coming out of the pandemic, kind of in the middle, but coming out at the same time. Um, the ability to apply for this grant and you were awarded it, and it allowed us to basically um, inject, you know, into the economy and assist, uh, and be able to assist our local businesses who were because of the pandemic, were the ones that were hit the hardest. So, um, with that said, when we applied for, we got awarded and at that time, um, we were able to also provide um, uh, to stability to our businesses, because not only were they losing revenue, they were also losing people, because people were not allowed to go to work, so they would stay home. They were highly impacted, so at that, at the same time, jobs were being lost within the community, so um, this grant allowed us to be able to assist three businesses, two, three local businesses. One of them, which is completely new, and two of them are existing. Uh, the first one that is new, which is the Solid Ed Cinema, which is operating under Premier Cinema, was awarded a loan in the amount of two hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. This loan was uh, to a business that was long been waiting, you know, the community was waiting for that, um, who have been, actually been in the works for about like ten, fifteen years. And so this was a long-waited um, addition to our entertainment industry within the city. Um, this business is really crucial in the sense that it not only provided a different um, type of business in our community, but it also provided an opportunity for our youth to be employed. Um, this business not only employed, they were only allowed, actually required to hire seven full-time employees, but in reality, they hired about forty, from what I understand. So on and off, full-time and part-timers. So that is a lot of use within our community. Um, the second business that was assisted with this program was Blasadada Bobby. They are an existing restaurant. They were in, uh, mayor of closing down their restaurant completely and shutting down. Um, the, the um, loan that they received for fifty thousand dollars allowed them to continue existing and also allowed them to hire two full-time employees. Um, the other business, the Winwell Restaurant was, is also an existing restaurant, Heidi um, sought out to. Um, it's one of the restaurants that is very popular in this area. Um, they were approved a loan for in the amount of seventy thousand dollars. This restaurant uh, was also allowed to continue hiring two full-time positions, but also we uh, they also invested in kitchen and equipment, um, and also in much-needed inventory. So those are the three businesses that we were able to assist. The total allocation um, on these, on this grant, four hundred and sixty-five thousand was dedicated to business loan activity. And then thirty-five thousand was allocated for the administration of the grant itself. Um, the grant, based on the uh, finance aspect of it, this had no impact in our general fund, which was great, and it was fully funded through the grant itself. This includes the loans, our myself, and also the consulting services for our consultant, uh, Angel Johnson. Um, I'm here today to present the final reporting on this grant. Um, it does not require any sequel reporting and um, any comments and any questions that you may have. Um, it does not require any sequel reporting and, um, any comments and any questions that you may have, I'm available.
Thank you, thanks.
Yeah, for, um, for all your work on the, uh, with the businesses and the C D G, uh, um. Lums that we have, so at this time, I am going to open the public hearing, and I will open the public hearing at seven forty-eight. Okay, and so I want to, um, extend, uh, anyone that is here in our chambers, if there is any public comment. On item, uh, public hearing number two.
Okay, we'll come to the fact.
Hey, Madam Mayor, council members and city of Solidad, and my name is Max Shell. I teach Solidad High School, I'm also active in the business community with merchants, I have some semi-prepared remarks, so I make it brief. We are very positive and happy with the actions and the work of this program. On behalf of the Solidad merchants, I'd like to thank the city council and specifically Tensia Vargas. Um, and the economic development department for their commitment to Solidad businesses. Not only did these loans help the businesses that we see them, it also greatly helped our community. It allowed them to create jobs, uh, in our community, since local businesses regularly give back, they were able to contribute. From the Solidad merchants, thank you for your efforts, uh, that are much appreciated, especially after the pandemic and these difficult economic times. Uh, also, the Solidad merchants have been meeting regularly on the last Thursday of the month. And we'd like to ask anybody who's interested to come out, especially business community members. At our next meeting, we have very exciting news and positive developments, and you can also find us at solidadmerchants.com. Uh, I appreciate your time and thank you again, outstanding, and it's great because these things really benefit our community, and we look forward to more. More opportunities like this when they come down, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Okay, so let me take it to those that are joining us via Zoom, any public comments from those that are joining us? Via Zoom. Okay, I see no public comments on those, uh, via Zoom, so I will close the public comment. At seven fifty, and I will bring it back, uh, to the council, uh, for any comments or, uh, potential action.
Good fun, uh, yeah, I want to thank Tensia and, uh, economic group for bringing that forward, especially the time when we needed the most. Yeah, when you get some money and what's able to flow into our businesses to help them. Stay alive, I mean, because it was a difficult time, and now we're transitioning out of that, we're, we're kind of out of that now. But, uh, it's still, it's still struggling to get it up and running, so any, any type of partnerships that we have. And the grants that we can seek of our local business people is outstanding, and, and staff, I know you guys do a heck of a job on, on seeking those out. I thank Max and Solidad Merchants for coming forward and sharing that information with us, because it is extremely important that. That, you know, we understand we're on the same page and we're heading down the same road together for the betterment of this community. Uh, to see our community grow, to have those businesses here, where they can make some money, and they have to make money in order for them to stay open. Because otherwise, they're going to shut their doors, and then we have to travel further to get, buy our food. Have dinner, those type of things, go see a movie, I haven't been to Salinas since the theater opened. I see how my movement's here, I gotta wait till sometime that comes, but, uh, you know, uh, I really do enjoy it though, so thank you so much for all the work that you did.
Thank you.
Um, yes, just, uh, wanted to echo some similar sentiments, just thank you to our economic development department. I'm also, I think, um, Angel Johnston, I've had the pleasure of working with her and, um. Meeting her, and, and she, she knows her stuff, she usually works remotely, but she has a way of still. Um, connecting with the business owners that she helps, and I see Tensia nodding. Um, also, I, I guess, um, you know, our, even our, our co- my colleagues here on the council, you know, I'm, I'm glad that. We are able to work together and pass, um, resolutions that, that help our community and our business owners. Um, I did have one question for staff. Um, and that was, while I was reading the information, I did see on there that. As business owners are, are repaying their loan, um, there is a, uh, a mention of a program for revolving loan fund?
Yes, so all of these funds do go into a revolving loan fund, which can only be used for additional loans. So basically, we are creating like a savings account. And this is great to have, because, um, with other cities that have these type of programs. When you are able to now self-fund yourself as a city and, and be able to assist. Um, other, you know, businesses with the same money, um, it allows you a greater. Amount of money, so.
Yeah.
Currently, I should remind you, we currently do have an existing, another, a new grant of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So just, just imagine that, seven hundred and fifty dollars for an existing grant, but this itself is additional funding.
Yeah, so. So for these, for this, um, additional funding, um, money that we're getting from the payments, I guess my question is, do we have. A program already set up where we have like the guidelines, the requirements, and is that? Okay, so it's just gonna be?
Guidelines, yeah.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Yeah, than- thank you, um, I also want to, uh, make sure that I also echo and thank. Um, also, our state, our state legislator, so I want to say thank you to, you know, State Senator Gallego and. Assembly Speaker Rivas, because this money that we have before us, that we've been hearing with the C D G loans and the grants. Really came from the COVID-nineteen pandemic and came because. Of their champions at the state level to be able to bring this money to us, the locals, which was historic, because it has not happened in the past, so. Just for the community to know and acknowledge that we can't do this, we would not, the city of Solidad did not have the funding mechanism to be able to. Provide this level of assistance if they were not for, um, the support of our state senator, Ana Cavañero, and also our speaker, um, Robert Rivas, who really fought. Part, so I want to make sure we don't forget about that. Um, and also, I want to make sure that, you know, this money came during the pandemic. Several years ago, and I know the partnership also with the Baharo CDC was really instrumental. Um, I know they continue to have a representative that comes to the city of Solidad. Um, continues to support our businesses, and they've actually been able to acquire not just C D B G funding, but other funding sources. Uh, for our businesses, and they have a lot of resources at the state level, they're also now women's business, um. I think they're women's business, they have the Women Business Center and Salinas as well, so I think our businesses. Have a lot of resources now that are really, um, here to be able to support them, um, at the state level, and also. You know, at the local level in terms of some of these other organizations that have come here to really support our businesses as well. So, Tensia, with that, I just want to say thank you for all the work that you've done, I know when the pandemic happened and we had the funding, so our community knows the first. Set of funding sources. Um, even though the state legislators have allocated the funds. A lot of our small businesses, like the ones in Solidad, had a really hard time because. They had to upload applications, they had to submit all of these requirements. And I know at that time, you, you and the rest of our city staff. Were telling them, come, we'll help you, we will scan this, we will upload it for you. Because that was a challenge for many of our Latino and small businesses, and I know, um, the city really stepped up. Economic development team really stepped up to support them, so to make sure that they did have access to these COVID. Loans that were coming from the state, so thank you so much for everything that you guys have done.
Thank you, that was me, Nadia.
Yes, I know, it was only two of you, but we had a lot of support. Besides this, there was other grants during that time that a lot of our businesses were able to acquire as well as part of the state funding.
And I just want to add one last thing, um, I know it's not part of the report, but I, I do want to, um, mention that, I'm glad that you mentioned Baharo. Um, we still continue an effort in our department to reach out to businesses, and, you know, we have a policy of a door-open policy, so. They're welcome to come into my office and talk to me, whatever question they may have. I try to make myself available, um, the, you know, we're at the Gateway Center. Um, actually, tomorrow, we will be having Capacita with Economic Development in the morning at eight o'clock. Um, here at this facility, so, um, we still hold those meetings, and, you know, our public. I want our public to know that if you are thinking of opening a business, or you are a current business owner, and you need those resources, like Baharo Valley, they will be on site tomorrow. So, it's still happening, um, we're still providing assistance, and we are looking for even new partnerships, so. We're doing the best we can.
Yeah, and just a note on that, so Baharo CDC, we have, uh, kind of an MOU, but there's no money, there's no.
Really, they give them no money, I think Solidad gives them no money.
And they continue to have a staff person come here and represent because also the dedication to the businesses, so we really want to thank Carmen, that, uh, her team. Um, for really stepping up and coming to the city of Solidad.
Thank you.
Thank you, okay, so with that, council, I, um, if. I will, uh, entertain a motion to approve resolution number sixty twenty-three.
Somewhere.
Certainly.
Okay, so. Yeah.
You had a motion.
Had a motion, a first and a second, okay, so all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, any, uh, abstentions? Okay, so motion carries unanimously, thank you so much, um, Tensia, thank you to the economic development team. Okay, so we'll move on to our next item on our agenda. Which is, uh, new business, so we're down to our new business items, and we have. Uh, six new business items, so we'll start with business item B dash one, resolution number sixty twenty. A resolution of the city council of the city of Solidad. Are receiving a presentation of Salinas Valley State Road School Plan and Solidad Participatory Budgeting Process and Results of the Community Vote and Approved the Projects by the Solidad Steering Committee. And directly staff to schedule implementation of these projects. Have long titles here.
Good afternoon, council mayor. My name is Altra, I'm the assistant engineer here, and as that lengthy title suggests, you know. We're going to be talking about a presentation on the Salinas Valley State Road School Plan and Results of Community Vote. We actually have some members here joining us today, so shout out to them. Um, and Ariana Green over at Tamsi, giving the presentation, I'll let herself formally introduce herself here.
Good evening, mayor and city council, my name is Ariana Green with the Transportation Agency from Monterey County. And, um. Yeah, we, uh, we're, we've partnered with the city and College Action and the Monterey County Health Department. Um, and we're working on developing a safe routes to school plan with the goal to make it safer for kids. To get to and from school all across Solidad. And tonight, we're going to present some of the safety projects that are in the plan. That the community has prioritized through a participatory budgeting process. And that our agency would like to fund with your approval. Next slide. Um, if you're unfamiliar with, uh, this process, participatory budgeting is. A process where community members get to decide how public money is spent. And for this particular project, Tamsi's providing up to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to fund safe routes to school projects in Solidad. Next slide. What's really awesome about this project, of this process, is that it is really led by. Community members, by, um, a group of community steering committee members. So the steering committee designs the participatory pros- budgeting process, so it's a little bit different in each of the communities that we've worked with. The steering committee then, um, looks at the large list of projects that's in the, that's been developed as part of the planning process with input from the greater community. And they go through that project and, um, talk with their, their fellow community members and. Narrow down that project list to put on a ballot. Um, and then the community gets to vote. For the projects that they feel are the most important and that they want to see done right away. And then lastly, um, we fund the winning projects with your approval, next slide. The Solidad Steering Committee was formed, uh, was recruited by the Monterey County Health Department. Who reached out to community-based organizations, local community-based organizations, they presented at schools. And they, um, outreach through their own networks, and so. Uh, we ended up with a group of, uh, an awesome group of really. Um, amazing, dedicated community members who are really passionate about. Improving health and safety for kids in Solidad. Uh, we had a series of nine meetings, they were, each meeting was three hours long at night. And so it was a good time commitment, and then there were events and outreach that happened between the meetings, so. Um, these, this steering committee was really, uh, put in a lot of time, their own time and effort into this project. Next slide. We held a community vote, um, in Solidad, and we had paper ballots and physical ballot boxes set up at each. At all of the schools across Solidad. Uh, we also had voting locations at the library, at city hall, and the community center. And also offered an online ballot for people to vote online. And all the ballots were offered in English and in Spanish, and we received two hundred and forty-six total ballots, and about half of those were in Spanish. Next slide. So, um, this slide shows the results of the community vote, and for this slide, I'm going to call up one of our steering committee members. Anita Flores, uh, to talk about the projects, and while she's coming up here. I'm just going to quickly let you know, uh, what's on the table here. So, uh, the column on the left, uh, are the project numbers, and this is how the projects were listed. In the, uh, the voter guide, and then we, next to the right is the project description. Then the cost estimate for each project, and then the total community votes that each project received, and it's ranked. With the most, the project with the most votes at the top, um, to the least votes at the bottom, and the projects that were, are highlighted in yellow. Are the projects that the steering committee is recommending be funded. And with that, I'm going to hand it over to Anita to talk a little bit about each of these projects.
Thank you. Buenas noches, miembros del Consilio como me presente. Mi nombre es Anita Flores, soy residente de 27 años. Y le damos gracias a CAM, Ecology Action, y el Departamento de Desarrollo del Condado de Monterrey, por traer este proyecto. A nuestra comunidad y darnos la oportunidad de ser miembros del comité directivo. Para limitar los retos que nuestros estudiantes día con día tienen, y no solo nuestros estudiantes, sino la comunidad completa. Le pedimos que apoyen este proyecto y se llevaron estos tres, cuatro. El primero sería mejoras peatonales, que es el número tres, en Ocean Lane y Gabi Land Ride. Los beneficios que nos traen es de seguridad para los peatones y aumentar la visibilidad. El proyecto cinco, mejoras peatonales en Benito Street y Gabi Land Ride. El beneficio es la delineación y extensión de acera que mejorarán la visibilidad del peatón. Y reduce la distancia del culte peatonal. El proyecto seis, mejoras en la intersección en Medias y Gabi Land Ride. Y el beneficio también es la seguridad de nuestros estudiantes. Y visibilidad. En el proyecto doce, mejoras peatonales en Ocean Lane. Y el beneficio de este por la seguridad de las personas que caminan, como todos lo saben que pues. Somos muy animados a caminar en el Ocean Lane ahora más que está. La gente camina con sus mascaros, por eso queremos que nos apoyen a estos proyectos y sobre todo con nuestros, nuestros estudiantes. Porque ya han habido casos que han atropellado estudiantes, gracias.
Muchas gracias, Anita. Next slide.
Uh, before we just move on to the next slide, I'm just going to quickly, uh, you know, uh. Kind of here, but essentially, you know, my name is, and, uh, Anita Flores. And, you know, she's been a resident with the city of Solida for twenty-seven years. She wants to give a huge shout out and a thank you to Tamsi, College Action, and of course, the Department of, uh. The Health Department of Monterey County for bringing these projects towards the community here, you know, she was, um. From what I was recollecting, you know, her speech here, and she's really happy, uh, to see these improvements. Especially for the safety and overall wellness of the residents here, especially the students. And, you know, of these listed, uh, projects here, we went ahead and chose number three, number six, and number five, and number twelve. All with the intention of just bettering the streets, law enforcement, and some of these other street mentioned here, and she's really happy and, you know, grateful for responding to.
Thank you. So, um, next steps are, um. Uh, with your, uh, approval, then we can move forward and, um. Provide the funding, which again is up to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the projects. And I will note that the projects, we have cost estimates for each of the projects, but. We recognize that, um, costs, construction costs change all the time, and so. It may not be possible to fund all four of these projects, and that's okay. Um, the goal is just to fund. The goal is just to fund, make as many improvements as possible. And we do have one condition, another condition of the funding is that it, the money needs to be spent within three years to stay with the the goal of the project to really get implementation, get these important safety projects on the streets sooner rather than later. And the funding is, will be available as soon as January twenty twenty-four. So we could really get this, get these improvements on the streets really soon. And that concludes my presentation. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ariana, for that information. And thank you, Alex, as well. And thank you, and thank you, Anita, gracias. And thank you to all of the, the committee members that participated and gave a lot of their time to really provide the input that we have before us today. So with, with that, let me take it out to the public to see if there's any comments or questions, and then I'll bring it back to the council for comments or questions. So members of the public that are here with us in our chambers, if there's any public comments, any comments on this item.
Buenas tardes, buenas noches, alcalde, miembros del Consilio, city manager, y personas que nos acompañan en día zoom y personalmente. Mi nombre es Martha Sara Teixier, residente de Solidad por más de dieciocho años. Vivo en el nuevo Chelito, Francisc. Y soy miembro del Comité Directivo de Rutas Seguras a las escuelas de Solidad, y he generado la oportunidad de ampliar mi liderazgo, que mi voto ha escuchado. Participando en mi comunidad cídicamente, obteniendo la oportunidad de colaborar con otras personas y organizaciones, identificando las necesidades de nuestra comunidad y abogar para hacer cambios para la comunidad de nuestros niños. Estoy aquí para pedirles el apoyo para adoptar los proyectos y recomendaciones de rutas seguras a las escuelas. Buenas noches, gracias.
Gracias. Alex, are we going to translate?
So, you know, she says, good afternoon, Mayor, members of the council, city manager, and the members joining us here today. Now, my name is Martha Sara Teixier, and I'm a resident of the city of Solida for more, for about eighteen years. She lives on nine eighty Front Street. So she's been a member of this committee for the Save Routs to School Program for the city of Solida. And this has given her essentially the opportunity to, you know, amplify her vote, her reach and her voice, and, you know, make sure it's her. She's participated in the, she's participated in this community and, you know, given this opportunity to collaborate with other people in the organization, identifying the needs of the community. And essentially, you know, highlight the, the changes for the safety of our children. You know, she's she's here to hopefully ask of the council for the support for the adoption of these projects and recommendations for the Save Routs to School Program.
Thank you for translating. Okay, any other members of the public? Candy?
Hola, buenas noches, y mi nombre es María Ana Mires. Soy miembro del Comité Directivo de Rutas Seguras a las escuelas de Solidad. Y residente por más de doce años. Siendo miembro del Comité Directivo, me dio la oportunidad de conocer la necesidad que hay con respecto a la seguridad de nuestros hijos y jóvenes estudiantes cuando ellos se dirigen hacia las escuelas. Para los que caminan es muy peligroso en las áreas en donde no hay un staff o donde no hay un cruce. Es por eso que estamos aquí pidiendo que escuchen nuestro proyecto. Gracias y buenas noches.
And I'm really grateful everyone brought her, you know. Hello, my name is Maria Ramirez. I'm also a member of the committee for the Save Routs to School Program for the city of Solida. And, you know, she's been here, or she's a resident for more than twelve years. You know, being a member of this committee has given her the opportunity to understand the needs with all the respect to the safety for the kids and just young adults that are students. And, you know, they're essentially, they're terrible path toward schools. You know, a lot of these paths are considered dangerous. And, you know, there's areas where there's no stops or just crosswalks. So that's why she's asking for the council to, you know, essentially approve and give direction to set for this, for these projects here, taking products.
Thank you. Okay, any additional comments from those that are joining us here in the chambers? Okay, any comments from those that are joining us via Zoom? Okay, seeing there's no comment, so I'll bring it back to council for comments on council action on item, on resolution sixty twenty. So we'll start with comments and then we can do a motion.
Yes, I just wanted to, to thank everybody that worked on this project. Thank you, Alex, Anita, Martha, y María, you know, for, for all the work. And it's so important to have community, local community people working on it because you guys know our school routes, you guys know your kids, our kids. So it's so important to have locals involved. And I really appreciate that. I know you're all busy with your own lives as well. I did have one question. So I don't know if we get to ask questions right now or just, okay. My only question is, I know that the rain is coming. So once approved, what, what does the start, start timeline look like?
So given the fact that, you know, it's approved, we'll be essentially in the process of having all these projects vetted by a traffic engineer. We want to make sure that, you know, when we consider these implementations, we're not unintentionally causing harm instead of good. So that'll probably be the first steps and that'll bring some time, you know. Next year, I wouldn't be able to give a certain date, but, you know, as the time approaches, I can definitely follow up with council and, you know, give a date. But yeah.
Yeah. For your, your time and effort, because I know, three, three hours, it gets, three hours, I'm ready to go home too. So for you to come out there, I really appreciate it. And it's for the benefit of our kids. I'm surprised, though, I looked at your list and I didn't see a couple of, one, one area is North and Main. Right there, they had, we had a child get hit going to school there and taken to the hospital series. And in that area of Main Street School, they basically, they passed right through Tucino, Solidex Street. In that area, cars seemed to drive really fast down Solidex Street. And I haven't seen cars go around the kids while they're, while they're walking home from school or walking to school. So I saw that's on the list. It's not on the top of the list, but the other one was Tucino and Main Street, that same area. That's that corridor that they used to walk on. Las Hicimas, to that, that area that heading down to that part of town. So it's the ones that you identify seem almost as busy, but I believe because of the work that you put in. One of the things that I noticed is that we did have eighteen thousand dollars left over. Two fifty, we're going to spend two thirty-two. And I hate to leave any money on the table, but understanding there's sometimes there's overruns, there's always overruns. But if we could capture that with the last item that you had of the one for thirty-one thousand seven hundred on that no U-turn signage, I know it's thirty-one thousand. I hope we can move into paying for part of that or starting for that if there is any money left over and not giving back. Because we could use it here. And as you saw, there's plenty of, plenty of areas that we could look at.
Yeah.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Gomez first. In order to the engineer, I just wanted to address some of your concerns, Mr. Jimenez. And one of the things we're doing in the background, engineering, public works, is a comprehensive citywide evaluation, looking at the last ten years or so of collision data throughout the city. So one of the elements we're doing in addition to the four projects of the eighteen that are identified in the Save Routs to School Plan, is we have another, we have a lot of other transportation and safety-related improvement plan and projects for the city. What we're doing is building, in addition to the engineering evaluation and analysis that Alex is referring to, is having it grounded in, you know, a review of collision data, right? And what we'll be able to do is develop a matrix, which will also help prioritize which looking, you know, fundamented in the analysis of collision data and tenure history, and then be able to prioritize where the most relevant and beneficial safety improvements can be realized. Yes, we have this list. We have other lists of projects throughout the city. What we're doing is laying that out citywide globally, so that we can assess where the best use of the funds are and where those safety improvements will be captured. So I'm sure the locations that you're referring to appear on that. And there'll be truth to that, that collision data. Like, you know, it's a lot of data. It's ten years' worth. And we've already started diving in on those locations in town where we've had the majority of those accidents occur, and then the active accidents.
Great. Looking forward to that information in the future. And then with that said, I'd like to take the, make the motion.
Okay.
And in the steering committee, the, go ahead and prove the recommendations of the areas of three, five, six, and twelve that they highlighted, and any additional ones left over. Hopefully, we can work on item number two.
I'd like to second it. Okay, so we have a motion on the floor, and I'd like to make comments at this time. So thank you so much again to all the steering committee that worked hard to, to make sure that your voice was heard and going out there. And thank you for spending the three, three hours additional, right, of every meeting. So I know obviously there's a lot of, there's a lot of other, you know, other areas of concern, but I think this was driven by the community. So after me, it's important to be able to really support what the recommendations were. You did the work, you went out there, you talked to the people. So I think your list is really, really critical. So in regards to Mr. Gomez, the collision data, thank you for mentioning that we have that. I know that we've been working on other studies. So being able to make sure that that gets to us also, you know, relatively soon is really important as well, because we have had several accidents. And I know our community is really concerned about that. But, but I have a question before I, I, you know, move forward with approval. You know, a lot of these that were identified were obviously in close proximity to school zones. And I know we've entertained conversations in the past about staggering. I mean, there's a lot of congestion in the morning. And I think that's, you know, I'd like to see the time planning of the collisions of the, you know, collision timing, right? But I know the mornings are really congested, just all over, especially in those school zones. So for me, I want to make sure that we take this opportunity. And I don't know if there was already a dialogue as we were doing this process with the school district to really look at the consideration of doing some staggering school times. I know they do it in Salinas with the middle schools because it avoids a lot of that, you know, congestion in the morning and then some of that heavy traffic in the evening. So, you know, I commend Tamsi and I commend, you know, our our committee, but I also want to make sure that there's conversations with the school district. We'll, we'll continue to see this as we have more traffic and we're building more housing and more people are coming. It's only going to get greater. And I, you know, these are, these are good measures, but at the end, you know, they're not, they're not going to stop, right? So I think for me, it's, I know we've talked about it in the future. I would want to know if we had those conversations with the school district and how we can have those conversations about the potential of really staggering some of the school, school times to address, now that we have data in terms of concerns, you know, I think it's really important to be able to have that conversation now rather than later. And then also on, you know, if these products, you know, these projects, obviously, we have three years for approval, but I know Don has a long CIP list to get done. And so I want to make sure we have the funding and that the funding is utilized as, as was suggested and recommended by the committee. So I want to make sure that we have the capacity, first of all, to be able to get that done. And I know we probably don't have the capacity, but how can we, I think I want to make sure that on our CIP list, we go back and look at, you know, making these projects a priority because of the funding allocation and the three-year funding so that they, they jump into our three-year CIP list. I know we have the forecasted five-year. And be able to look at some of the other CIP lists that maybe need to be deferred to different timeframes if they're not urgent, because I know Public Works can't absorb all of the projects. And I would hate to make, I would hate to come year two or three and we haven't done it because we don't have the capacity and then the, the funds are lost. So I would like to make sure that that happens and that we can prioritize those and come back with the revised CIP list to ensure that these are prioritized based on the funding. Okay, so those are all my comments and questions. And again, thank you, thank you everyone for, for this. So we have a motion on the floor and we'll go ahead and call for the vote. All in favor, say aye, aye. Oh, hold on. Before I do that, council, I just want to acknowledge and for the public that council member Cabrera did join us. He joined us at eight seventeen P M. So he is now also in the meeting and able to participate as well. So with that, then I will do a roll call vote since he has joined us. So I will yes.
Sheriff Holt and Ben, Mr. Junior?
Yeah.
Councilmember Maria Fernando?
Yes.
Councilmember Fernando Cabrera?
Yes.
Okay, so motion carries unanimously. Thank you so much. Thank you so much, everyone, for joining us. Gracias, gracias, Anita, Candy, Martha. All in all, muchas gracias. Thank you for being here. My name is Privilege. Can we get a five-minute break? Or, or a non-essential in my life. So so we will go ahead and at this time, we're going to take a five-minute break and then we'll come back. Yeah, thank you. Yeah, thank you.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you everyone for your patience as we took a little break. Uh, we have more items on the agenda for today. So we'll move on to our second item of business. Um, resolution number sixty eighteen, a resolution of the city council of the city of Saladin, declaring an emergency pursuant to section code twenty-two zero one-six-eight of the public contract code in section three point two-four-zero-four-zero of the Saladin municipal code and approving a contract with Anderson Pacific Engineering Company in the amount of two hundred and fifty thousand for emergency repairs of the levee protecting Saladin Water Reclamation Facility from flood inundation from the Salinas River and authorizing the city manager to execute set agreement on behalf of the city of Saladin. I will turn this item over to our public works director, uh, Mr. Don Gocox.
Thank you, Mayor. And as you mentioned, we're here to talk about the levee that's protecting our water reclamation facility from the Salinas River and vice versa. If anything happened to, uh, our water reclamation, may it still be, uh, or the levee or wastewater plant, the wastewater river. So I've got this first exhibit up there that shows just the wastewater plant and levee in the river. Hopefully you can hear me. As I just pointed out, this is our wastewater plant. It was a big berm here which we call the levee. And this is the current Salinas River. Over here, the Salinas and the Royal Seaco Rivers combined, and then they point right at the treatment plant. This is the former Salinas River that I'll talk about in a minute. And this is its current path right up against the levee. So the next slide. The levee was built in the late nineties by the, um, South Florida Department of Corrections and Rehabilitation about the time they connected to the city of Saladin wastewater treatment plant. Because, uh, CDCR wanted to get out of wastewater business there in the corrections business. So they built the levees as part of the project. They built a pipeline from CDCR to Saladin and they built these levees around it so that, um, the plant would be protected. Something interesting to notice is there was just a little levee back here. I'm gonna step over here for one more minute. This is the old levee, this is the river in its old path. When they built the new levee, they took out the old one. And so that's part of the, one of the contributing factors to the river moving nowhere up against the levee. It wasn't envisioned, I don't think, but, um, as soon as they took out the old levee and built the new, the first storms after that, probably the late nineties, uh, certainly after twenty seventeen, the river changed course and moved up against the levee. The problem that causes is the levee is designed to retain swelling water against it. It's not designed to be, uh, a riverbank with water flowing along it, scouring it. So it caused damage in two thousand and seventeen. It took us several years between claims with FEMA and Army Corps of Engineering, Army Corps of Engineers to get Army Corps of Engineers to come make those repairs. They made all the repairs last December, December of twenty twenty-two. Literally finished one day before the storms that last winter, which were significant, started. So, one of the frustrations with Army Corps, um, FEMA, when they provide assistance, they provide assistance and funding to put it exactly the way it was. Well, it needs upgraded because it wasn't designed against scouring just for holding water. So this last winter, we had more damage, not in the same exact areas, but in other areas. Little bit to the same area that was just repaired, but more so downstream of it. So we've got some significant erosion and scouring for about five hundred feet. And I think about seventeen hundred feet, uh, minor damage that we're worried about. If we have the same winter we had last winter this year, it could reach the levee. So the action we're talking about tonight is to be prepared for this winter. Um, we don't have time to do another Army Corps project, although we've been in touch with Army Corps. They will come help us flood fight if we contact O E S first. Um, if there's significant, if the, the levee is damaged this year, we're could fail. Uh, but they will come back next summer and do more repairs. We've also been talking with FEMA who said, yes, if you have to do an emergency repair this winter, you can put in a claim and it might get reimbursed. We've also talked with FEMA about a brick grant, building resilient infrastructure communities program grant to reroute the river backwards it's supposed to be and do all the repairs on the levee. That's about a twelve million dollar project so far. We're in good shape for eight point seven millions of it, million of it. But, um, we're applying to our three point one local O Cal O E S grant to provide the match. But that's for a big project to fix the levee so it would sustain, uh, or, um, be okay with the river scouring and also reroute the river. But what we'll need to do this winter is be prepared with bringing some rock and having a contractor on hand to place the rock if the levee starts significantly scouring, we're could fail. Rocks hard to find right now, contractors are hard to find right now because a lot of levee, levee owners are doing the same thing. Last winter was tough on us, obviously Paharo, um, more so Chular. Um, so staff is recommending that we stockpile some rock and have a contractor on hand ready to help us shore up the levee if it starts to fail. In any case, we can use the, the rock either to flood this winter or when Army Corps comes next summer or a bigger project later. So the rock will come into place. We're not suggesting that the contractor place any of it now, but just watch it through the winter and be, have the equipment and the materials ready to, to place it if we need it. So that's staff recom- staff's recommendation. Uh, we're getting all sorts of prices on rock trucking. But the contractor has committed to, uh, holding the FEMA acceptable unit prices for materials, labor, and, um, equipment. Somewhere between, uh, we, we need roughly three hundred to five hundred tons of rock stockpiled toys as they allow you to use on the levee if, if needed, if it gets damaged. So staff's recommendation is to buy three hundred to five hundred tons of rock and have the contractor on standby, ready to place it if we need it. And then since we don't really have time to put this project out for bids, staff is recommending that we declare an emergency, which enables us to contract immediately as opposed to taking roughly two months to get this project going. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Don. And we do have an engineering firm already that's been noted in just for, I don't know if you mentioned that, but just for our residents, it has been noted in, in the report, which is Cannon Engineers that would be on standby.
Yes, they helped us determine what kind, what size rock to buy and where we're gonna put it. And the, the worst, they've inspected the leveage and we know where the worst and most likely damage areas will be.
Okay, thank, thank you for that. And so let me, um, take this out to any comments from the public and then we'll bring it to the council for any comments and, um, action, council action. So any comments from the public that's joining us here in the council chambers? Okay, seeing none, then I will take it for any comments from the public that are joining us, uh, via Zoom. Okay, I don't see. Okay. I don't see any hands.
Maybe Stephen can help?
Okay, any, uh, any comments from those that are joining us via Zoom on item B dash two? Okay, seeing none, then I will bring it back to the council for any comments, um, and questions. Um, and so I have a few just comments and questions, but, um, all of that up to, um, Mayor, Mayor Prent.
So if, uh, also we have a problem, river's changing, they're gonna be here tomorrow, trying to do rock.
So we're kinda.
Yes or no?
We're ready. If as soon as this gets approved, the contractor can start finding rock.
Okay.
We're still hoping to find cheaper rock.
Okay, so, okay. Right now, we have a little bit of time, so, alright.
Yeah, we're watching the weather.
Yeah, cause that's, uh, you know, we had, I was on the council back when that hundred, you know, year storm happened and it did flood and all that situation occurred. So yeah, to be on standby and to be ready to go to do that, so that doesn't happen again. Definitely, yeah.
Yeah, just last winter, you know, it worked right here, so I can imagine, forty ninety storms. Yes.
Okay, thank you, Councilman Coralejo.
Um, yes, I, um, first of all, thank you for the information and report was pretty comprehensive. And we, we feel the urgency and we see the urgency. Um, I, you know, think that, um, to me, I think it is, uh, you know, a great idea to start planning ahead of time because, um, the last thing we want is once we're in the middle of it to try to get rock and it's not available. Or, or if it is, um, it's hiked up the price because of basic supply and demand. So, um, you know, just wanted to say thank you for, for the information. And I know for me, I, you know, I speak for myself that I just see the urgency of it.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. So, Don, thank you for the work on this. I was here in twenty seventeen or twenty sixteen when I know we started this conversation with the Army Corps of Engineers and them coming out and all the, you know, back and forth in terms of the permitting process, right?
FEMA.
And FEMA and all of this. So I know it was five years and it took forever. And thank you for being just, um, continuing, uh, to press on them, the, the need for this. So, you know, thankfully, the day before the winter storms, it was completed, but it took us five years. But thank you for your tenacity on that. I just, you know, I don't have any questions in terms of the urgency. Obviously it's important and they'll be on standby. So just to be clear, it's not, I mean, they're gonna look for the rock, we're paying for the rock. But then the services, if we need them, um, then we'll be contracting with Cannon Engineering to do that, right? To prepare.
They'll be directing where the rock goes, but the contractor that just finished Dixie Street, Anderson Pacific will have the equipment here to place it.
Okay, perfect. Yeah, and I think for me, I just, I know I looked at the levee last time when, uh, we had the storms. And I know council, Congresswoman Loughlin came and we also gave her a tour of, you know, what was completed. So based on what you just said, I'm trying to, to visualize it based on where we're at. So they're, you're extending that because I know where it ended. So are we extending that further out? Cause I know during the time of the storms, I mean, there was a lot of debris and the river already obviously had taken up a lot of space. So we're just extending where the end of the, um, existing levee was completed last year.
So where we repaired last year needs some touch-up. And then exactly where you said, downstream of it, the first five hundred feet's the worst and then another seventeen hundred feet is medium damage.
Okay.
That also needs done.
Okay, well, thank you for that. And thank you for, um, also on the grants. If you can just let us know more on the grants that are being support, that are being proposed. And I would recommend that, I know, you know, obviously we spoke to Congresswoman Loughlin, you were there. A lot of this is federal funding as well. Um, and if we can, you know, talk to their office, get a letter of support from them for us to submit any of these grants and also for her to be aware that we're doing this and if there's any need for us to be able to reach out to her if FEMA or, you know, Army Corps of Engineers is not, uh, I think more FEMA, right, is, is not responding to us. Um, that we have her as an ally to be able to talk to her and get their support.
Yeah, absolutely, because in the past FEMA and Army Corps are pointing fingers at each other. And now we have them both helping us. I don't know, the Congresswoman helped us already, but yes.
Okay, well, good. I just wanna make sure that we continue to have her involved. There's, um, yeah, it's important to, cause then she can go to bat for us a lot sooner as well if we need her. So thank you. So council member, um, Gavera, I wanna make sure I don't, don't forget about you, that you're on the line. Do you have any comments or questions?
Uh, yes, uh, I just wanted a, um, a little clarification is, um, the, the rocks that we, that we're talking about, are we purchasing them right now or only in case of emergency?
So the plan is to purchase them now, having started delivery as soon as, uh, maybe in the next week or two, I don't know about the holidays. We're watching the rainstorms before we, the person major, we're gonna do that. So we're gonna bring the whole three hundred to five hundred tons of rock in, stack it on the levee, ready to use if we get, if in the wind, we get the next big storms that rise the river up again.
And, and if I, I'm, I'm, if I remember correctly, we're gonna have him as a, uh, to protect. And then, uh, there was a mention of using them, uh, for something? Uh, are, are you gonna build something with that, uh, some sort of protection for the levee?
So if we don't end up needing it over the winter for flood fighting, we'll use that same rock with the Army Corps of Engineers project to finish up what they started last winter. Instead of being a, a match, be able to use the rock for the matching.
Perfect. Thank you. That, that's all from my part.
Okay, um, thank you, council member Gavera. So we will, I think this requires, uh, all of us to be here. So we'll give, uh, if there's no further time, we'll give councilwoman Coralejo just a few minutes to come back and join us so we can take the vote on this item. Okay, so here she comes back. So, um, I will resolve to accrue resolution number sixty eighteen.
So, so.
Okay, there is a motion on the floor. Uh, can we get a roll call vote, please?
Mayor Anna Velasquez?
Yes.
Rachel Ten, Ben, and Menendez Jr.?
Aye.
Councilmember Maria Farlaval?
Yeah.
Councilmember Candace McMara?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries unanimously. Thank you so much, Don, for continuing to work on our levee.
Worries us a lot last year.
Absolutely, I know.
The water come up the levee two directions at the plant for the first time.
That's very, it was super scary, yeah, absolutely. Okay, so we'll move on to item B dash three, resolution number sixty twenty-one, a resolution of the city council of the city of Saladin approving a consulting services agreement with Corolla Engineers, um, for professional engineering services for the Saladin Recycle Water Conveyance Project and authorizing the city manager to execute agreement and the not, not to exceed.
just um continuing uh to press on them, the the need for this. So you know, thankfully, the day before the winter storms, it was completed, but it took us five years. But thank you for your tenacity on that. I just, you know, I don't have any questions in terms of the urgency. Obviously, it's important and they'll be on standby. So just to be clear, it's not I mean, they're gonna look for the rock, we're paying for the rock, but then the services, if we need them, um then we'll be contracting with Cannon Engineering to do that, right, to prepare.
They'll be directing where the rock goes, but the contractor that just finished Dixie Street, Anderson Pacific will have the equipment here to place it.
Okay, perfect. Yeah, and I think for me, I just, I know I looked at the levy last time when uh we had the storms and I know council Congresswoman Laughlin came and we also gave her a tour of, you know, what was completed. So based on what you just said, I'm trying to to visualize it based on where we're at. So they're, you're extending that, cause I know where it ended. So are we extending that further out? Cause I know during the time of the storms, I mean, there was a lot of debris and deliver already, obviously had taken up a lot of space. So we're just extending where the end of the um existing levy was completed last year.
So where we repaired last year needs some touch up and then exactly where you said downstream of it, the first five hundred feet is the worst and another seventeen hundred feet is medium damage.
Okay.
That also needs done.
Okay, well, thank you for that. Thank you for um also on the grants. If you can just let us know more on the grants that are being support, that are being proposed and I would recommend that, I know, you know, obviously, we spoke to Congresswoman Laughlin, you were there, a lot of this is federal funding as well. Um and if we can, you know, talk to their office, get a letter of support from them for us to submit any of these grants and also for her to be aware that we're doing this and if there's any need for us to be able to reach out to her if FEMA or you know, Army Corps of Engineers is not, uh I think more FEMA, right, is is not responding to us um that we have her as an ally to be able to talk to her and get their support.
Yeah, absolutely, because but in the past FEMA and Army Corps are pointing fingers at each other and now we have them both helping us. I don't know, the Congresswoman helped us already, but yes.
Okay, well, good. I just wanna make sure that we continue to have her involved. There's um, yeah, it's important to, cause then she can go to back for us a lot sooner as well if we need her. So thank you. So council member, um, Governor, I wanna make sure I don't, don't forget about you, that you're on the line. Do you have any comments or questions?
Uh, yes, uh, I just wanted a um a little clarification is um the the rocks that we, that we're talking about, are we purchasing them right now or only in case of emergency?
So the plan is to purchase them now, having started delivery as soon as uh maybe in the next week or two. I don't know about the holidays. We're watching the rainstorms before we get the person major ready to that. So we're gonna bring the whole three hundred to five hundred tons of rock in, stack it on the levy, ready to use if we get if in the wind, we get the next big storms that rise or ripper up again.
And and if I, I'm I'm, if I remember correctly, we're gonna have him as a uh to protect and then uh, there was a mention of using them uh for something. Uh, are you, are you gonna build something with that, uh some sort of protection for the levy?
So if we don't end up needing it over the winter for flood fighting, we'll use that same rock with the Army Corps of Engineers project to finish up what they started last winter. Instead of being a a match, be able to use the rock for the matching.
Perfect. Thank you. That that's all from my part.
Okay, um, thank you, Councilmember Caballera. So we will, I think this requires uh all of us to be here. So we'll give, uh if there's no further time, we'll give Councilwoman Cora Lejo just a few minutes to come back and join us so we can take the vote on this item. Okay, so here she comes back. So um I move to approve resolution number sixteen eighteen.
So, so.
Okay, there is a motion on the floor. Uh, can we get a vote, please?
Mayor Anna Velazquez?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Ben Jimenez Junior?
Aye.
Councilmember Maria Carlejo?
Yeah.
Councilmember Candace McMarra?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries unanimously. Thank you so much, Don, for continuing to work on our levy.
Worries us a lot last year.
Absolutely, I know.
The water come up the levy two directions to the plant for the first time.
That's very, it was super scary. Yeah, absolutely. Okay, so we'll move on to item B dash three, resolution number sixteen twenty one, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Saladette approving a consulting services agreement with Corolla Engineers um for professional engineering services for the Saladette Recycled Water Conveyance Project and authorizing the city manager to execute agreement and not not to exceed two point seven nine nine million zero seven four. And I will turn this over again to Don Boca, our Public Works Director.
Yeah, thank you again, Mayor. Since at least two thousand and five, the city has long strived to have a recycled water utility enterprise um as identified in in major planning documents such as the city's urban water management plan, long-term wastewater management plan, and most recently recycled water master plan documents. This exhibit here is an excerpt from the Recycled Water Master Plan. So when the city built their water reclamation facility, designed it in two thousand and six, started construction in two thousand and eight, it was a state-of-the-art facility in that it used to be a pond system. Now it's a primary, secondary, tertiary treatment plant that produces what they call Title twenty-two uh quality water, which you can use for recycled water, landscape irrigation, parks, schools, um pretty much golf courses, pretty much anywhere. You just can't have it in contact with the with people. Um, so the plant was built with that capability. We built the pipeline from the uh water reclamation facility to the city, but we didn't have enough money to uh send it to any parks or schools at that time. So since that time, we did a recycled water master plan that said if we did have the funding, this is how we would distribute the recycled water throughout the city. And basically, this plan sends it to all city parks and all city school district facilities that have turf uh for your playgrounds or parks or or things like that. Uh, if we could swing that, then we would save roughly fifty-six million gallons of potable water a year. Uh, that's a lot of water. So we applied for a grant after we completed the recycled water master plan to construct this distribution system, which is a whole nother system, just like our uh potable water distribution system is just recycled water for your landscape irrigation. And applied for a um grant through the um UCD's uh urban community drought relief grant program. Uh, the project total cost was like seventeen million dollars. Uh, we were approved for the grant for the full seventeen million dollars and a few months ago, council entered a contract with the state to get that money and construct this recycled water distribution system. Uh, so one of the, two of the benefits of it is we save fifty-six million gallons of potable water. That keeps the aquifer flowing. Maybe it'll help people downstream against seawater intrusion and everything else. But also, if we enter another drought period, like the five-year drought period from two thousand and twelve to two thousand and seventeen, uh, the governor will mandate significant restrictions um other than this left, if it hadn't been for this la- uh wet year, wet winter last year, we may have gone to restrictions from water parks or school playgrounds or turf areas. If we construct a recycled water system, there will be no restrictions. So if we enter another five and seven-year drought, we can't irrigate our parks or schools with potable water. We can still irrigate in which we so consolidate and still be green if there's major drought restrictions in the future. So the steps towards building this recycled water system is to design the system and then construct it and we'll have to do a rate study to find out how much we charge ourselves in the school district for the recycled water. Um, obviously, there will be CEQA and uh permitting steps as well. We're in the middle of permitting steps. That was one of the consent items earlier that was passed to finish that. Uh, this item is for a design contract for an engineer to do the survey, help us with CEQA and design of a new distribution, distribution system throughout town. Uh, the uh process for that was we get an RFP for design consultants. We have two submittals um MNS and Corolla. We interviewed both and it was unanimous decision or recommendation of the interview panel to go with Corolla. We then opened their price estimate. It was quite the sticker shock. It is a very large project, but a distribution system throughout your city, that's a big piping project. Uh, the initial uh fee estimate was three point seven million dollars. We negotiated um went through their entire proposal line by line, came down to more realistic number of two point seven. Um, that's still a lot of design money. It's a lot of hours. It's thousands of design hours. Um, and then we wanna have everything in the design contract upfront so that we don't have any um conflict of interest issue coming up for, so they can do engineering during construction, um do all the survey, as-built drawings, everything. So this is the total cost uh for engineering for the project. It's about fifteen percent, which might be right on the high side of the total project uh uh project cost, but uh staff believes it's reasonable and recommends approval of this contract and we can get going on this fantastic project. Um, we do have limited time to complete it. I think there was three years from the time to sign the grant. So we have roughly nine months to design it and eighteen months to build it uh to be in compliance with the the grant kind. So I'd be happy to answer any questions. Then we also have um John Marshall from Corolla available to help with the questions.
Thank you, Don, for that information. So let me take it out to the public first and then bring it back to council. Is there any members of the public that are here in our chambers that have any comments on item B dash three? Okay, seeing none, then any members of the public that are joining us via Zoom, any comments on item B dash three? Okay, seeing none, then I will bring it to council for um any comments or questions on this item and then um we'll entertain a motion. Let me start with Councilmember Caballera now, so I don't forget. He's on line with us. Councilmember Caballera, do you have any other questions on item B dash three?
Actually, um, just one. I know that that this water is gonna cover some of the parks and uh and school uh um fields, um sport fields. Do you know if i- if this water will be um pumped to any of the uh water fountains where people drink? I I just ca- I I when I was reading the whole report, I was thinking, well, will people be drinking from this or is this water gonna also uh supply that new park?
So that's, that's a a big component of the design is so their first park, which is a separate project, will be Veterans Park. We're gonna get there really soon. Uh, you can't just disconnect the potable water and then recycle water because the bathroom, the drinking pounds are all in that system. So we have to uh perform a cross connection control survey, uh put dye in the water, make absolutely sure that this doesn't go to any drinking fountains or uh the sprinkler doesn't spray on picnic tables. Uh, there's, the state has a whole set of criteria that we have to meet, uh submit for their approval and everything. And it's, it's pretty uh uh significant, the level of effort to make sure that it's not, there's no cross contaminations or cross pipelines. The recycled water will have uh chlorine residual in it, so it it doesn't really cause any damage. It's just not um drinking water at all, but it's fine for irrigation. Um, also, Oliver Calgary uses it, Pebble Beach uses it, Richardson School in Pebble Beach is the first one in this area. I thought we were going to be to use recycled water, uh but we will be the first public parks to use it.
All right. Thank you so much for that.
I thought we were the first ones.
I didn't know about Richardson School.
Yeah, well, it's okay. I know we, we're way further than any, than other cities for the size of our city anyway. So that's great. Okay, council, um, Councilwoman Cora Lejo.
As long as I don't start coughing here, but I just really wanted to to commend you, Don, you, Alex, and your whole team. Um, uh you know, there's uh on our city website, when you go on it, there's a a saying, it says small towns with big city ideas. And that that really makes me think of you and your whole department. Um, you know, I I think it's just, to me, it's not just the the innovation, um but you don't just bring problems, you bring solutions. You, whenever you come, you tell us the problem, you tell us the solution and you tell us where you're getting that money from. So it doesn't get easier that than that. And I know as a council member, I totally appreciate that. Um, but you know, besides that, it's helping out not just our community, that now we're gonna be a little bit, you know, greener and a little bit more environmentally uh friendly and in recycling uh that water with our distribution system. Uh, but to me, it's just the fact that you're making our city a self-sustainable city. And to me, that is huge, um honestly, and I'm, I'm really beaming with pride um because I, it's a huge deal. So just thank you and Alex and thank your team.
Yes, it's a great team. And another benefit of a project this size, roughly, it's a seventeen million dollar project, roughly a third of it is materials. All materials that get delivered to Saladette, we get sales tax.
Awesome.
Our own project we get.
That keeps getting. Awesome. Thank you. That's all my comments.
Okay, thank you.
And I'll just echo what everyone has said, um, great job guys, um, and the whole crew. Uh, again, creating innovative ways to uh make us be the first, if not the second, to uh to implement this, but uh also being, you know, conscious ways of our our climate and in in addition to conservation and ensuring that we're set up for the future. And that's what's occurring here. And and we have a timeline, my question was timeline, we answered those. So uh, thank you guys so much.
Yes, Alex and I watched a presentation last night where we learned about Richardson School, so.
Well, I have to tell you, I I was part of the um, the well, uh cohort this year, the Water Education for Latino Leaders and moving out to the, out the state of California to learn about water. And obviously, recycled water projects were huge. And I was telling you that we were from a small town and we had this, right, because not a lot of other cities do, and even the bigger cities that have more funding and we, you know, for the, for our residents, we are one of the only smaller cities to want a municipal water system, right? So that's also really important to note. And so this is pretty, pretty massive. So I do have a couple of questions. And again, I'm gonna go back to you know, you mentioned that this is a three-year grant program, grant that we have. And so again, I, the CIP list that we have done, I know that capacity is, obviously, there's a lot of projects on that CIP list. Uh, but I really want it to be realistic in terms of what can be done and based on also funding priorities because we wanna make sure these projects get done within the amount of of time that we have from the state. And so if we can go back and look at that um CIP list again and really amend it based on those at least two now priority projects that are before you to be able to make sure that those are prioritized and that we can meet those deadlines within the three-year timeframe of completion.
You know, traffic safety um projects will take a lot of our time because it's idiosyncrasies within this, the city that we're needing to convey with, to the engineers. This pipeline project, it's almost a turnkey with assigning it to a design engineer. Obviously, we have to manage the project, but they just did the the big one in Marina, they did the Paso Robles one, I think. So it's, you know, it's a big project, but it's proportionally, it's not gonna take as much time as the traffic safety. So those will be our local priorities.
Good, thank you. Yeah, this is long and we're being realistic on the time because I know you guys are stretched pretty thin already. Uh, but I also wanna acknowledge the state. I think, you know, this is a important that we're at the forefront of it, but also again, for our community that without the state funding, we obviously couldn't do these kind of projects. Um, but also, in in terms of the report that you provided, I also wanna thank the council way before us, right? Because they approved the con- the concepts of the recycled water system before recycled water was even part of our climate action. And so just, you know, a shout out to all of the the former council members that were really on the forefront of making this climate resilient um as part of this project. So I I have my other question is though, in regards to the rate increases, you did mention that slightly, so I just wanna understand that. So and as we were, as we're saving fifty-six million gallons of potable water, right? Um, what are the rate increases? Wouldn't that, I mean, I guess I'm just concerned in terms of, does that mean that our residents gonna are gonna incur rate increases because of the recycled water project?
Actually, no. Um, so since the state is funding the capital cost, the we, by proposition two eighteen, we have to establish a new rate. It's not, it's raising the rate of recycled water from zero to whatever it used to be. Certainly, it shouldn't be more than potable water. Without any capital cost, the rate study should come back that significantly less than potable. And the only customers are the city and the school district for recycled water. So it won't affect each house or.
Okay, okay, good. I just wanted to be clear, cause I saw, I I heard you say that, wanted to make sure residents understood, understood that. Um and then my, my last question on this is, um, who was the other bidder? I didn't see that in the um in the the report and was awarded based on the lowest bid?
So in engineering, professional services, we select based on an interview panel of the best qualified. We don't even open their fee estimate until after we've selected a consultant and then we negotiate the fee estimate like we did in this case. Uh, the reason being there is you want the best qualified and theoretically, their rates are, hourly rates are about the same. It's gonna take them about the same number of hours. So their fee estimate is just an estimate. It's not a fixed fee project, so if it takes less, uh, if it costs us less, if it takes more hours, then if it does cost more, it's just, it's an estimate at this point. Whereas in a construction bid, yeah, that's how we award. However, they need to do it for the price they gave us, that's, that's the bottom line.
Okay, so on these, we don't have to, cause I know you guys are really good about putting the the bids, you know, all the bids. So I didn't see it on this one. I just saw Carol, but I didn't see like the, you mentioned the second bid and I didn't see it in the report.
Yeah, I'd like to put it in there. So we did put it on Planet Bids. We did a formal RFP where we had advertised and the newspaper twice and notified all the firms in the area that we have this project out for proposals. So we did an RFP request for proposals for professional services projects.
Okay, well, thank you. Yeah, just because I didn't see it, so I know you guys are good.
We talked to three, two other firms besides that.
Okay, good. Okay, well, thank you. Those were my questions. So um I'll entertain, I'll make a motion to approve resolution number sixty twenty-one. Second. Okay, I have a motion on the floor. Can we get woke up, please?
Mayor Anna Velazquez?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Ben Jimenez Junior?
Aye.
Councilmember Maria Carlejo?
Yeah.
Councilmember Fernando Cabrera?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries unanimously. Thank you so much. Thank you, Don, for all the work on this. And Alex, thank you. It's been pretty exciting to see this moving forward.
Thank you.
Okay, so we'll move on to our next item on our agenda, which is B dash four, resolution number sixty twenty-two, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Saladette declaring city-owned property, a possessor parcel number eight hundred and zero two 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 one one dash zero one one on Front Street as with us manned and authorizing the city manager to proceed with the surplus land act profit per site disposition. And I will turn it over to uh Hannah.
Thank you. Um, thank you. Um, so tonight, we're bringing um resolution sixty twenty-two um to declare city-owned property uh at five oh two, portion of city-owned property at five oh two Front Street identified by APN zero two three dash zero two one one dash zero one one. Um, it has came forward to staff um in interest for potential site for commercial, free commercial title project. Um, because this is publicly owned land, the city must comply with the Surplus Lands Act um before engaging in negotiations with the commercial developers interested on the property. Um, upon council adoption or conservation and adoption, the city would declare the aforementioned city-owned property surplus and have the city manager prepare and then all their notices um that are attached um uh to council and the public on the staff report. Uh, so for brief background, the Surplus Lands Act uh is part of government code section five forty-two one, which requires the city to declare uh publicly owned uh property um that is not a part of the local agency plan as surplus. Um, and that is not deemed necessary for the local agency's use. Um, in the fall of twenty nineteen, Assembly Bill fourteen eighty-six uh amended the Surplus Land Act, which addressed the housing crisis by promoting the construction of affordable housing on surplus land. Uh, what that means is that um now surplus land shall be considered for affordable housing um to a list of affordable housing developers provided by the California Department of Housing and Community Development. Um, therefore, uh the city must go through that process before moving any uh moving forward for any negotiations on the property. Every description of the property, once again, is at five oh two Front Street, um which includes a Saladette Gateway Center and the Setap Chavez Park. Uh, this property is about one point acres and the property we um are inquiring to uh declare surplus at is point six five nine acres um and is provided in the map as attached within this exhibiting and noted as parcel A. Uh, this property itself is identified in our downtown specific one as part of the downtown for Saladette, which includes a lot of the retail. Which includes a lot of the retail um and central block of downtown, what we would consider downtown. And ultimately, the civic core of Solid Ed. Um what this means is that the downtown specific plan identifies the side of the vibrant um use of. Commercial activities such as retails, um restaurants, entertainments, bakeries. Um and office spaces and so on, so the use within the downtown specific plan already classifies it more centralized toward commercial purposes. Um therefore, we believe um um as declared as surplus, we can move forward with. A negotiation presented to council um for any um transfer to sell or lease this this piece of property. Um one thing to note is that the property has um has, is a constraint on lots. It's uh fairly narrow and no room for expansion due to the active New Pacific Railroad line. Um in addition, the um negotiations with adjacent landlords must be must occur. Um through access easements, including the city of Solid Ed due to the uh Gateway Center being next to the property we're considering surplus. As well as um the property next to um the. Property of interest, which would include Solid Ed Auto Sales. Um so those two would be in negotiation for any um access access easements um for any future development. Um in order to facilitate further interaction with interest with interest of developers, staff recommends declaring the property as surplus. And proceeding to um fully notify and go through the process that HCD um identifies in the Surplus Lands Act. For the affordable housing um developing developer agencies. Um how this works is that we will be sending a notice out to the list that HCD provides. Um and we have sixty days to receive any party or there's sixty-day notice or any party of interest to communicate. Um to the city of any interest for affordable housing development, development. Um and if we do get a notice, we must negotiate in good faith for at least ninety days. Um and if we don't get anything, any interest, then we can communicate back to HCD. Um and they would have an additional thirty days to review all the paperwork and all the information we um to make sure we follow those guidelines. Um, the process in declaring this land surplus does not authorize the lease or the sale of the property. Um it's just a process um the city must go through in order to continue the negotiation with um. Um any the developer that's interested in developing that lot. Um, individual property transactions are required, as mentioned, to come here to council for approval, review and approval. Um again, once again, the aerial maps and the cesspool parcel maps are included in exhibit A. Where a portion of five oh two Front Street is being considered as surplus. Um in terms of CEQA, um this project was proceeding sent um pursuant to one five zero. Six zero of the California Environmental Quality Act. Um and the meaning, meaning it's not, it's not a project as defined as in one five three seven eight of the CEQA guidelines. Um at this time, uh representing it for presenting this item for um consideration and approval. Unless council um provide, would like more information, um we're um able to. Um to see how we can move forward with this um resolution.
Thank you, Ariana, for that um detailed report. So let me take it out to the public and then I'll bring it back to the council. Any members of the public that are joining us here in our chambers have any comments on items B dash four? Okay, seeing none, then I will take it to those uh members of the public that are joining us via Zoom. Any um comments on item B dash four? Okay, seeing none. Um then I will bring it back to the council and let me go ahead and um. Let me go ahead and start with Councilmember Cabrera as well, so I don't forget that he's um with us. Um Councilmember Cabrera, any comments on item B dash four?
Uh, no, I just wanna thank uh Ariana for all the work that she's done. I I can imagine all the reading that she does every single day. So thank you so much for your dedication, your um uh work. Thank you so much.
Mayor Proten Jimenez.
Uh no questions, no comments, I'll make a motion to uh adopt resolution sixty twenty-one.
Second. Okay, so we have a motion on the floor. I have a question, Ariana, on on the um resolution. Solid Ed Auto Sales, I know you talked about the date, I mean, I know we have to, obviously, cuz of the state and the purpose, just so our. Our community knows, it's really to be able to provide affordable housing opportunities to our communities. Um but the notification process, because they would, I mean, depending on, you know, how this moves forward. And that is later we develop, then they would have to request access uh to. So can you just clarify that? And were they notified? Were like, the notification process for the surplus land act? Did it also include the adjacent properties that are within what we're considering the surplus land act um properties?
Yeah, so um doing initial work um in configuring what lot area we need to lease or sell or lease. Um uh we got the help of our surveyor with Harris and RJ. Um to make sure we plot the the math or the information we provided in exhibit. And it seems like there is an easement um on that side that, you know, we have to make sure we address to the future buyer or. Um tenant of that property. Um so they would have to also work with Solid Ed Auto Sales to either take away the easement or get easement rights to enter the property itself. So it's um more so working with the properties um to get entry with uh right away. For that property. Um with regards to letting the nearby um owners and businesses know about the surplus land act. I I don't, I think we can do so, it'll be a public item, but we do have to comply with the list of HCD, that's the priority. To send it out to those list of affordable housing developers and make sure we clear that checkbox with HCD.
Okay, good. Yeah, I would like to see, I know, you know, obviously HCD has their list, but if we could do notifications, especially to those adjacent. That adjacent property that may have some impact. Thank you. Okay, so with that, then we have a motion on the floor, so I'll call for the.
The chair, I need to amend that, I said six zero two one, six zero two two.
Okay, great. Thank you for thanking that. Six zero two two, wanna make sure we're approving the correct resolution. And so with that, I will um turn it over to, for a roll call vote to.
Mayor Ana Velasquez.
Yes.
Mayor Proten Ben Jimenez Junior.
Aye.
Councilmember Maria Corlejo.
Yes.
Councilmember Fernando Cabrera.
Yes.
Okay, so motion carries unanimously. Thank you so much, Ariana, for all your work. Okay, we'll move on to our next item on our agenda, which is B five update regarding various appointments to council and city committees. And I will turn this over to our city attorney.
Um yeah, very straightforward with the resignation of uh former council member Chavez, there are a number of um. Positions on various committees and so forth that need to be filled. Um and so you should go through that process if you uh. I'll fill in time with HCD so that we can uh have proper representation on the committees that are identified on the uh. The chart that's attached to the staff report.
Okay, thank you for your brief report. Uh so I will.
To the chair.
Yeah.
Yeah, I have a question. Are we gonna go uh in order or?
Um yes, let's go, let's go in order um of the appointments that are here. Uh but let me take it out to the public and then I'll bring it back to the council. Okay, so with that, then uh thank you for that question. So any members of the public that are joining us here um in our chambers have any comments on item B dash five? Okay, so I will take it out to those that are joining us via Zoom. Okay, seeing none, then I will uh bring it back and what I'll do then, um let me start.
Uh I just uh I just wanna also note that this uh item also covers the the request that was made by councilman Corle. I hope to be replaced as the alternative to the uh Solid Ed Historic Society Board.
Okay. Okay, so let let me, let me go through this, so. Um so one of the comments and I just wanna make, cuz I know we typically don't go through this process right now and obviously there's, there's a. You know, um there's some of the need because of the resignation of councilmember Chavez. But I just wanna remind the council that we will go through this appointment again in January. Because that's the regular time that we do all the appointments. So some of the appointments that we're gonna fill will be only throughout that timeframe. And then when we come back on the January appointment process. Um the council does have the opportunity to amend those appointments or change those appointments, right? Just wanna make sure I'm correct with that, so, okay, perfect. So I want that to be clear. Because we will come back in January for the full appointment process on this, so. Um okay, so I will um, I'm, so let me go through Ambag.
With the chair, if I may, can can, would it be easier just to address those vacant spots? Since Chavez is gone and then we're not gonna go through the whole thing, cuz it's gonna change anyway in January, right?
Right, the the intent of this evening's action is just to replace the highlighted uh.
No, we're not going through everything, so I'm just going through the highlighted ones. Yeah, yeah, those are the only ones, so you have that in your packet and then has a highlight, so. On the Ambag, um I'm the primary, but councilmember uh. Uh councilmember Chavez was the alternate. Um so I will leave it up to the council if there's any volunteers to be the alternate for that uh for the Ambag. I, I could be the alternate. Okay, yeah. So we will make that note then, um councilwoman Coralemo. Um the alternate um the for Ambag. Thank you. Okay, then I'll move on, Tamsi.
I I wanna uh be the representative, I was the alternative, so I would like to take um into that role.
Okay, so we have councilmember Cabrera, we're in agreement then, um he was the alternate, so to make him the primary. Um and then we do have the alternate position to fill, so any um volunteers to be the alternate? And I'll volunteer to be the alternate on that one, since I know I was uh previously um volunteer before councilmember Cabrera. Do we need approval or just kinda go through that?
We're just gonna go through, I will just have him to go.
At the end, okay. Okay, so we'll move on to the next item, which is the South Salinas Valley Broadband Authority. Um, and who was the alternate on this one? I thought Cabrera was the alternate. But if not, so, um or maybe I was alternate.
I I think I was the alternate, yeah.
I was alternate, huh? I was alternate on that, yeah, I was the alternate on that, so. Um so this is really critical because there's a lot moving forward with the Salinas, uh with the South Salinas Valley Broadband Authority. So I will open this up to any volunteers for this um, this position, this committee.
I would like to be the nominated.
Okay, so we're in agreement then, councilmember Cabrera, okay, and then. So on the other ones, measure S, do we need to do, we have a vacancy from Chavez and from Jimenez. And from the mayor.
Oh, those are.
Appoint?
Yes, those people need to be appointed, so I sent you great applications a couple of weeks back and I haven't heard. Back from any people that maybe you would want to be on those.
Okay. Yeah. So, I don't know if we're um Chavez isn't here, so I think that's gonna have to wait until we have. Do we need to wait on that one? Or do we need, I know measure S, we're always looking for quorum, so. Um it is a council appointment that, you know, we're not gonna have that, it's a vacant council seat, so how do we do that? Since he's not here, or it is the appointment of the council members.
Chavez is remain also vacant because, yeah, don't have anybody with the authority to make that appointment.
Okay, and then councilmember Jimenez, I don't know if you're ready to make an appointment tonight or we can wait until January?
Yeah, I'll get some within the month.
Yeah, I haven't received any, we still need to.
I'll get shot to a couple, so.
Okay.
So we come to.
Okay, and for me, on my youth representative appointment, I know that the last um representative for the youth was um our. Um, I saw that youth council, so. I would like to continue with one of those two, the two that we have as part of the stipends that we have. Um, excuse me, that we have as part of the city's stipend program, if we can, the two commissioners, sorry, the two commissioners. Uh one of those, and I will, I will send you who who wants to do that, okay? Okay, and then the liaison appointments, um. So Solid Ed Mission Chamber Commerce, I know that that was brought up today. We did have an appointment process there a long time ago and this is volunteer, we don't vote on anything there. We just attend the meetings and, you know, be there. Um so I don't know if I have any um volunteers for that. I know I did it at one point and we haven't done that ever, we haven't done that, so, so I, given kind of, you know. Some of the dynamics, I'm not sure, we want to appoint someone. So this was a plan, when I went, there was really, I mean. There is really, we go there, we don't have a vote. And so I think I'd like to really look at this, how we really want to see if we have someone on this board, what does that mean? We have some other, um we have some other, you know, we like, we have the merchants association, you know, I don't know why. I mean, why they would be on here, why we would want them, is it? Do we need to have someone? So I guess I just wanna make clarity and if we're gonna do it with them, are we doing it with other boards, other associations? So we can be clear on transparency and um just process, cuz this is kinda off. Because I don't know why.
Through um through the chair, I believe it's like the Historical Society where they requested. Um, I would think that if someone wanted to do it, um you could. Have someone who would step up, but if the, if that entity doesn't want our involvement, then obviously. They they wouldn't, wouldn't attend, but.
So maybe because this has been here for a long time, in the last several years, we haven't had anybody attend. Can we reach out to them to see if they want to continue having the city involved on the board? Uh I just, I'm just concerned because we've never, I mean, I know we have this process, but nobody's ever gone. And nobody has participated for the last several years.
Was that, was that one vacant or was that one, was um councilmember Chavez?
The last person that actually attended was the mayor.
Yeah.
Their meeting were very scarce and um just like what Mary saying.
Yeah, that was like four years ago. Yeah, so it's, yeah, it's up to you. Yeah, I recommend people often seek clarity before we appoint anybody.
I was gonna say, um through the chair, I. What's it called? Do you wanna say, I had two board members that spoke to me from the Solid Ed Mission Chamber. One of them kinda reached out, um asking for help, just with their structure. Or or lack of structure, and then I had someone else who's also on the, on the board and they kind of. Had the opposite and um what they didn't really want the city, like stated straight. Out that they didn't want the city involved with them, so, yeah, it might be a good idea to reach out, I'm, I'm not sure. Um, Mayor, you said you were the last representative, do you know why, what happened? Or why did we stop having representation?
Yeah, I think for me, it was, I was going to the meetings and we don't have any, I mean, obviously, we don't have, like the Historical Society. We have no vote on there, right? So we just go and we give comments, um you know, we can obviously contribute. I just felt that that at, that at time for me, it wasn't a valuable, um, it it wasn't a valuable time. I had other commitments and going there, I didn't really see a lot of the value in me attending because there wasn't a lot of. Kind of collaborative spirit at that time. Um and so I think the other thing too is just kinda meshing what were the goals, right? How can we work together in partnership? And although we know we do, um you know, the annual parade at that time. Um I just think, you know, we gotta go back and we gotta see whether they want us there or not. I I don't, I would not recommend that our, that us as a council spend time there unless they want us to be there. And um again, you know, it's up to them, I just don't, you know, I, there was not, there was no real goal. Maybe in other words of how we can partner, if we establish that moving forward and we find, you know. Uh partnerships, uh you know, besides like the Christmas parade and other activities that we can do, absolutely, but I just wanna make sure that it's wanted. Um because they're very different than any other ones, and if we're gonna do them, then let's do some of the other associations. But we don't have anybody on the merchants board, um so, I mean, why wouldn't we have someone here? I guess that's my thing. I wouldn't have anybody on the merchants board, um, so, I mean, why wouldn't we have someone here? I guess that's my thing.
And then we needed to, uh, appoint the alternate to the Solidad Historical Society.
Oh, okay, so Cabrera's the, the main one. Um, do we have any volunteers?
I, I got on as being alternative, because of the time on my schedule changed, and the meetings start in the morning, otherwise I would gladly stay.
Okay, see, no takers.
For the charity, they actually do want us involved, they requested, um, council member involvement.
Okay, so, um, I'll, I'll, I'll be the alternate, I know Cabrera's the main, so if he can't make it, then, um, I'll be the alternate.
I think, uh, through the chair, just my experience of being the alternate. And I think it's important to, to communicate on, not just on this, but on any of the boards, um, that we sit on, because. I had Mr. Stevens retell several times, and, and come to me and ask for guidance, and he wasn't. Hasn't been receiving it for, for months, is what I was told.
Okay, well, we have, um, report outs from every month, when we come to the council, on the committees that we do sit, so. Um, you know, it's incumbent upon each of us as council members to make sure that we do that. And if we're not able to go, then that we consult with our alternates in advance, um. Because it is critical, but I think that's our responsibility as individual council members that, um, are on these seats. And some of there are more consequential than others, so I know the Historical Society is local, but there are some other regional boards that are really critical. Um, our attendance, and if we don't go, our voice in Solidad doesn't get represented, so it's important for us to make sure that we do that. Okay, so. Yeah, Councilmember Cabrera?
I just wanna make a comment that, uh, it's interesting that, uh, the Solidus, um, Historical Society seeking guidance. When we cannot vote, and the times that I've been there, and they didn't really ask me for guidance. Only, uh, contribute the information, so I find it interesting that they, uh. Uh, look for guidance to council member Coralejo.
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Cabrera, that's why I would just state again, like I said, with, you know, what I found when I was on these other local. Um, committees, if we're gonna put them here, we're gonna dedicate our time. I think that we have to have some goals in terms of how are we partnering, what are the goals, how do we partner, what is the purpose? So that way, there's really a, a better comprehensive consensus and, and goals of why we're there, and what we are there to do. For those local ones. So, um, Megan, if we can kinda look at that, I know we have a contract. We have a contract with the Solidad Historical Society, so maybe looking at, you know, some of that language, and if there's any specific items that we can support. So we know, even though we don't have a vote when we go, that there is a purpose for us being there, not just listening and then not being able to vote on anything.
Well, through the chair, I think, um, that one specifically, they're looking at, um, the city to work with them. On the plan for the building, the plan for the collection. I think they're looking at kind of future sustainability, and that's why they asking for the private council.
Yeah.
The, the problem with, uh, appointing a voting member to that board is that they then have to conduct their, um, their meetings under the Brown Act.
Okay, and then we'd have to keep ourselves, if there's, right, if you're appointed to that board, they're not necessarily. Okay, got it. Well, thank you for that. Okay, so we'll move on to the next one. Um, which is the Ad-Hoc Recreations Subcommittee, and I think this one, we don't have to. I think this one, we wait, Megan, until, until January, to try to figure out what we're gonna do here, because we discussed it before. It's still here, I don't know whether it's necessary or not, since, um, you know, we have Measure S and Measure Y. And being able to, we, we established this Ad-Hoc Recreation Subcommittee. The members that are on there are no longer on there, so we need to remove those, because that's not accurate, um. And I've never, we've never had, since, you know, the last probably. Three, four years, we only had an Ad-Hoc, um, Recreation Subcommittee. So if council's okay, we'll just leave that, and we'll come back and figure out whether we need it or not. And if we need it, then what's the purpose and the goals for that? Okay, and then the, uh, the Planning Commission, that's the next one, yeah, okay, perfect, okay. So with that, then, um, we don't, any comments? Council, we're good, we can move forward on the next. Okay, and then with the conditions that we're gonna come back in January to go through this appointment process again.
Um, perfect, through the chair, um, one thing that will be important is, if you're the ul- alternate or the primary. If you can let the alternate know, if you can't attend the meetings, that will be.
Okay, so with that, we'll move on to our next item, which is now our B six Planning Commission appointment. And I will turn this over to Megan, who are city manager.
Thank you. Um, so, um, this is a brief report, I know that, um, there was a request from. Uh, council members, um, Jimenez and Coralejo to, um, put the discussion of the appointment process. Um, on the agenda, um, essentially, um. We do currently have one vacant, uh, position on, uh, the Planning Commission. We have received now, um, three applications, um, but we also wanted, uh, to. Um, follow up with their request to, to put this on the agenda, um. I just provided some background, um, currently, the planning commissioners, um, in the code. Are, are appointed by the mayor with approval of city council, um, and. I did look at various different other cities in Monterey County, just to see, I think there was a question about what other. Jurisdictions do, um, so it's not, and we're not. Different than others, there's, um, there's some that do city council appointments, some that have, um, similar. Um, Pacific Grove, um, it's a mayor with council approval. Um, Seaside is actually the most unique, because, um, it's not really council approval. It's the advice of council, um, and the council, the council establishes procedures for recommended appointments. And they advise, um, and then Salinas, which has long and district elections, they appoint. Um, by district, so, um, each, each council member plus the mayor has an appointment. So there are seven, seven people that sit on this, so this is the council. Um, so, we, redistricting could be a consideration. As you look, um, to, uh, potentially changing the planning commission appointment process. Um, there, I also wanted to note that, um, there was a subcommittee formed, um, in August. On city council procedures, um, which is comprised of the mayor and council member Coralejo. Um, we haven't, haven't met because of the, just all of the things that are happening right now. But, um, we could, we could also use that as an opportunity to take a deeper look at this. Um, and what we're really looking for is just some direction. Um, and the alternatives could be maintain the process as it is, uh, direct staff to, to modify the process. Um, refer the item, as I mentioned, there's a procedure subcommittee, or any other direction to staff.
Okay, thank you, Megan, for that report, so let me take it up to the public for public comments, and then I'll bring it back to the council. Um, any member of the public that was joining us via Zoom, like to comment on item B dash six. Okay, so any member of the public that is joining us via Zoom, um, have comments on item B dash six. Okay, see, and then I will bring it back to council, um, for comments or questions, and let me start with council member, uh, Cabrera, and then I'll. Have comments from, uh, the other council members.
Um, when it comes to this, I think that the, we already have, uh, uh, a committee, uh. Sadly, they haven't been able to meet, but, um, I think that we have to give them the opportunity to develop that, that procedures for all the committees' appointments. And, um, other appointments that we, that we have to make, cuz that is, that is a valuable opportunity for that. For that committee to develop those, um, those procedures.
Okay, thank you for your comment, uh, Mayor Potem Jimenez.
Yes, um, this is, it's been discussed, been discussed a, a few times, and actually, at April fifteenth, you know. Of this year, we, we discussed about it, and it was brought up by, uh, council member Cabrera, that each council member get in a, uh, an appointment. And, uh, we work from there, and from the previous way, which presently is the mayor appoints with the council's, um, approval. It's been six months, we're going on seven months, I, I even spoken to a couple of the, the planning commissioners. That said, I tell them, you need to show up at the meetings, we don't have quorum, we can't get business done. And for us to go on for seven months, six months, it's not acceptable, it's not handling city business in the way it should be done. Or do we use the old system, which presently is in place, because obviously, there hasn't been a, a change into. Uh, you know, the way we appoint these people, uh, on, on to the, on to the planning mission. Then, but we still need to move forward, um, we're just delaying, and it, it doesn't need to be delayed anymore. We can also give it that time to that group, council member. For that, and the mayor, your committee, to come back with your recommendations, but let's get disappointed, let's get this done, move forward in city business. Uh, it's, it's, it's also, um, disingenuous to those who have applied. We've had applicants in for, I don't know how many months now, and waiting, and waiting, and waiting, and. Oh, let's, let's put out again, let's put out again, let's, let's just go ahead and make a decision on it, and if they're not the ones, then we move forward. And we'll try again, but we need to at least show the people that respect and say, thank you for applying, however you're not chosen at this time. Um, so I would like to see us move forward, and because we don't have anything else in place besides. Uh, the mayor's appointment with approval from council, then let's go that route, well, let's move forward.
Um, yes, I think for me, I echo the same, the same sentiments as council member Jimenez had, and. I know for me, when, um, council member Cabrera first brought this, um, to us. I, I really liked it, especially with the fact that we're going into districting. Um, regardless of, of what, what happens, or doesn't happen, districting is, is, is gonna be implemented here in Solidad. And I just feel that that's, uh, for each, uh, council member to be able to appoint someone. It's just gonna be a more fair representation when it comes to our planning commission. And we do have a lot, um, going on right now, there's a lot of development in the city, I know there was a meeting. I believe it was on last week on Thursday, and, you know, it's just, it's very important for our city to. And our planning commissioners to keep moving forward, and also, I see the, the planning commissioner, um, position. Almost like a stepping stone in becoming a city council, uh, member, so, you know, they, those people that have applied do deserve our, our. Respect and deserve, you know, some kind of acknowledgement, hey, we received your application. Um, I'm not saying that didn't happen, but, um, you know, they, they do deserve a, a, a fair and swift process, so. Um, to me, today, if we don't agree on appointing, um. Uh, each council member appointing a, a commissioner, I have no issue at all with, um, working together with, with the mayor. Um, in our, in our Ad-Hoc, um, committee, and, and, you know, hopefully, working together and collaborating to come up with something that'll work for our community.
Yeah, thank you, Councilwoman Coralejo, so for me, I, I think I wanna echo that, I'm also frustrated, but for different reasons. Um, I think my frustration comes that this is a process that wants to be changed, it doesn't need to be changed. The process has been established, I mean, I got on the council in twenty sixteen, and the mayor made appointments with council, um, concurrence. And it wasn't ever an issue until this past year, when, or this year, I think it was this year, when I made several appointments, and it wasn't because. I'm not making the appointments, it's because council's not deciding it, and there was a lot of contentiousness. And I know that it was brought up in terms of having everyone, um, change the process, or having it change the process to include every, uh, person. Council member representing, or, uh, uh, selecting a planning commissioner, I'm not in agreement with that process. I know that we still have to go through the districting process, and if that, you know, once we have a full council, and that's decided by the full council, that that's rough, that they wanna go. Then, then so be it, but I think for me, I'm not, I'm, I'm not in concurrence with that, I think we have a process. The process is clearly stated in our policies, um, and I'm not interested in waiting either for future, because it's. As, you know, I'm gonna concur with Mayor Potem Jimenez, the people that have applied, have applied, and we need to, this has been solved, because. There was, you know, um, they, there was continuous discussion about changing the process and the policies. And, you know, I know that, um, Councilwoman Coralejo and myself were supposed to be on this Ad-Hoc Subcommittee. And I'm interested to continue, because I think our policies need to be updated, but I don't have the bandwidth to do this within the next couple of months. And I wanna make sure that the people that apply, um, and those that want to submit their application, that we honor that. And that we bring it back to be able to continue with the existing process that we have, because that's what's in our policies. Um, and, you know, for me, changing it to have every council member appoint, uh. Um, uh, planning commissioner, I believe the city council did it before. I was told by a prior councilwoman that that's the way it was done in the past, and that the council changed that system. Because what happens is then I'm appointing someone that thinks like me, and each council member is doing the same. So the planning commission is no longer an independent body of thinkers, but it's really based on, you know, alignment with. Each of the council member that appoints that person, and the planning commission is really critical to be an independent body that makes decisions. Based on what they have before them, and their obligation in terms of planning and design, and doing what's in the best interest of the city. So for me, I don't, I, I don't wanna delay the process, we have a policy, I don't think, I, I'm not interested in changing it right now. Because we have people that have been waiting, um, and I want to make sure that we bring those people for, um, that we. That there is an application process that's been done, and that we bring it back in December to appoint someone.
Through the chair?
Yes.
Yes, um, I'm, I'm following up on what, uh, council member Coralejo said about, uh, they're not meeting for them, there are five. There's only one vacancy, and that vacancy came about, um, early this year, when, uh, when the, um, uh, commissioner had to. Um, travel to Spain, and he was not able to attend the meetings anymore. I actually, uh, talked to him, uh, during the, the lights, the opening lights of the, the rainbow cutting for the lights of, uh. Uh, the park, and he said that he just left, and I think it was April, Mar- or April, around that April. So they only have one, one, uh, vacancy, and there's four, so they should have one when they meet. Now, um, I, uh, I, I was looking at the, uh, previous, uh. A B C, and I, and I believe that we still have, uh, B five. And I believe that we've been with more than six months, uh, not representation for, um, former council member Chavez and. Mayor Potem Jimenez, so we do have, although we, I, I, I truly believe that we should be. In certain instances, be able to appoint somebody, but we still don't have a representative for this, for the Measure S. From, uh, uh, Mayor Potem, uh, Jimenez and, and Chavez, who, which is not here anymore, but, but we still. It, it seems to me like neither of those things, well, they're not functioning correctly, because we don't have. Uh, that, that, that correct procedure that we need, and I, I firmly believe that, that, um. Given the, given the chance, the committee will come out with a, a better procedure and a better way to do things, than just rushing into things.
Thank you, Councilwoman Cabrera.
Through the chair, um, six months is not a rush, seven months is not a rush, um. Uh, I'm in agreement with the man, let's bring this forward, on six, put the person up, and if it's not a person. Then it's because you cannot agree upon it, and I take a person, and I'd say, well, you're not aligning my thoughts. Uh, your thoughts with my thoughts, it's a therefore I don't watch on there, it's, it's, let's try to get a best candidate, uh, yeah, on that, on that funding mission. And get it forward, moving forward, so, we'll pay with that.
Okay, so, thank you, thank you for that, so given that we have policies in place, we'll move forward with that to bring the, um, applicants. For consideration on our December sixth meeting. Okay, thank you, okay, thank you, so we will move on. to our next item on the agenda. Uh, at this time, then with our business item, so um, we'll move on to council reports. Let me just make sure I have my information here. I'll start with mine. On eleventh second, I attended the MBEB ninth annual state of the region. Um, it was a lot of great information. Just really quickly, they talked about the establishment of a racial equity commission um, at the state level and there was an executive order, um, and it's really to look at um, at blocking policies and practices that are equitable. Um, they talked about the climate funds, um, forty percent of those coming from the state are going to disadvantage communities. There's three point four million that's invested in the central coast to improve access to good jobs. And I think that's something that we as a city really need to be part of, um, because there is a lot of potential for funding and a lot of the work is really being done in terms of job creation. So I know our council has expressed um, interest in making sure that we bring those quality, high quality jobs to the city of Solidad. They also had um, a housing initiative panel. They discussed workforce housing. Speaker Rivas was in attendance and he talked about some of the issues that matter to Californian. There was a survey that mattered to Californians. He talked about a survey where sixty percent of Californians are worried about having a place to live. Um, and I know we hear it also from our residents here and also stated, he stated that Salinas was ranked the stomach most expensive place to live in the country. And it was more, more expensive than New York, Seattle and Chicago. Um, and that was based on the uh, lowest that we, they had the lowest wages. So the need to really make sure that we prioritize workforce creation and workforce development is really critical, um, not just for the city of Solidad, but for our, our region as a whole. Um, they had a panel, another panel on childcare. Supervisor Lopez was part of that um, panel. And I know for us the residents as part of measure Y, um, that was a language that was included in measure Y was really to look at childcare because we had a, a need for that from our Solidad residents. So I wanna make sure that, I know Megan has, has alluded that she's working also on looking at the potential for childcare um, facilities here and how do we make sure that we provide that? I know that's big at the county level as well, so we can partner with them. They also had a broadband digital equity for all and I know Stephen has been um, on several of those committees and meetings and making sure that we continue with the Salinas Valley broadband, but also if there's any, any other opportunities for funding that um, we provide that. I heard about, um, what, I'll go on to the next one. So then on the eleventh, I attended the Veterans Day celebration at the Historical Society Museum. So I wanted to say again, thank you to all the veterans and the families that we have here in the city of Solidad. And I just wanna remind, you know, us and our team of the, we have the flag policies. Council, uh, Mayor Porten and myself uh, had a subcommittee and the death life policies. And I just wanna make sure that we're vigilant as a city to make sure that those flag policies are being um, reviewed and that we have fly those flags that are really in front. So during this time, we wanted to make sure that we flew our POW MIA flag um, for the month of November, um, as part of our Veterans Day celebration. So just wanted to make sure that that, that, that happens. And I know Megan, you know, you're working on that to make sure that we have a flag here so we can make sure that we fly that flag um, in honor of all of our veterans and their families. Um, on the thirteenth, I attended the MST Board of Directors meeting, um, and that was a little bit more contentious that meeting was really um, looking at and discussing one of the items that was big was on the SB one twenty-five. Um, um, allocation that went to, that was part of the budget act of twenty twenty-three, um, and it allowed for funding, uh, because it's by five point one million. Um, you know, I don't wanna say it long. It was um, significant amount of money. Let me just make sure I have my information here. Um, that was provided to a transit agency, five point one billion, yeah, five point one billion. That was coming down to local transportation agencies. So there was a recommendation by TMC uh, to do a fifty fifty split for some of the rail projects and some of the um, transit projects. There was a big discussion with the board members in regards to the intent of that legislation and intent of the funding that really was one-time funding for transit operators to address the operational costs um, for finding long-term sustainable money because this money is not ongoing and also preventing service cuts and increased ridership and prioritizing access to transit for those who are transit dependent. Um, and prioritizing transit agencies representing a significant amount of the region's ridership. So given that, that Monterey Salinas Transit is the only transit provider in Monterey County, there was a discussion and wanting to uh, have a different, a different formula than fifty fifty to make sure that more funding um, is allocated to our trans- to transit, to make sure that we're providing the service to our underserved communities. Um, and then on the fourteenth, I attended the Central Coast Broadband Consortium um, with MBEB and Stephen was on the call. So Stephen, thank you. I, I stayed for the first portion, the first thirty minutes. Um, so it, uh, again, a lot of the broadband um, was discussed, but one of the highlights for me um, low fishing and computers. They talked about wanting to expand to South County and focused on seniors and technology. So they will be having an event on November twentieth in King City. Um, so they talked about that and I wanna make sure that we capitalize on that and that we reach out to them. Um, I know we worked with them before. They, um, through the chair, they are actually offering programming at the community center. For seniors? Yeah. Oh, awesome. That's great to hear. Um, so they just, thank you. So just for letting us know, because that's important for us as council to know. They so far distributed fourteen thousand computers and top nine hundred digital literacy classes since two thousand and nine. Um, and the, they also talked about the BEA funding that's available mid-year in twenty twenty-four. So I don't know if there is and I think you probably have more information on that and, um, and then the county of Monterey will have a presentation on the broadband strategic report in the January board meeting. So I think it's important to be able to attend and, and listen to that. And they gave an overview of the consortium account grant award objectives. Um, and I know Lisa Lutevici, who is our liaison with um, Spectrum was also on that. They provided funding in the past for some of the digital literacy classes that we've had. I think that was probably like four, five years ago, Stephen. Yeah, before you came on board. Yeah. So I wanna see how we can continue to work with them and see if there's an opportunity to partner with them. And with Fish Loes and Computer to try to get more of those fundings for more digital classes with our families. And that's all for my report. So I will turn it over to Mayor Porten Jimenez.
I'll make it quick. I uh, attended the executive uh, meeting on Simtulis Waste Authority on the second. I'll be attending our goal setting. It's like our third one I've been involved with. Goal setting with the other agencies, Simtulis Valley uh, Waste Authority, which is an outstanding, it's almost like a happy day event. Uh, but it's uh, very helpful in setting the year's priorities and establishing the goals. And it's kinda interesting because every year they kinda change a little bit and uh, and then the long-term ones stay the same and we work towards them. But it helps us crystallize uh, you know, where we wanna go and help staff focus their attention on the most uh, uh, create the priorities for that coming up, coming years in the next few years. That's all I have to give.
Okay, thank you, Councilwoman Coralejo.
I, thank you. Um, I've been a little sick, almost, it feels almost like for a month, so I couldn't attend too many things, but I did attend our our Dia de los Muertos, um, which also was on November second and it also um, was promoting and, and doing outreach for our general plan. It was a very well-attended event. Um, very successful. So I just wanna thank staff um, for that. And then also, um, I attended Food Fest on um, Halloween. And it's just um, offering another safe option for our residents. And it's from three to six, so that's early enough where um, families who want to go out and, and still have that trick-or-treating experience and people stores can still do that. Um, and it was, I, I wanna say the, the biggest one yet. It was the fourth um, anniversary. And then also, um, attended the business expo last week and um, that was real nice. It was the city of Solidad, city of Greifeld economic, um, what was it? BS? Sorry, city of Greifeld. And, and then also we had, we worked with the Monterey County Workforce Board. And um, through the Monterey County Workforce Board and thanks to state, county and federal funding. And they were able to employ, I wanna say it was maybe like eight youth, ages eighteen to twenty-four. Um, and they were um, in charge of the food drive portion, the Thanksgiving food drive portion. And the food collected is gonna be um, donated, I believe on Friday, this Friday, um, to the school districts, um, family resource centers for them. Food pantry. So a lot of good um, coming on.
Thank you. Councilmember Gobernador?
I was also sick and I'm sick again, but um, I attended the uh, Veterans Celebration for the Historical Society. And I also communicated with, with them that I was not gonna be able uh, to attend today, today's meeting because of my surgery. Um, I will uh, be attending next time and I will be also communicating with Director Todd from uh, TMC to set up an, an appointment and go with that, what I need to do and, and everything else. That's pretty much it.
Thank you. So we'll move on to um, our next item on our agenda, um, which is council member praises. And I'll start with Councilwoman Coralejo.
Um, I have a few, a, a few praises. I'll make it fast. Um, I just wanted to again thank um, our staff member, Tensa Margas and also Dawn Wilcox. And you know, Tensa, one thing I remember from when I first met her was she said that she wanted to be a bridge. Um, or she wanted, yeah, she wanted to be a bridge on the gap with the city and, and local businesses. And I honestly have seen that and there have been times when she's been the only one in that department. Um, she's been there since it was new. I believe she designed the Gateway Center. Um, and, and through all the changes, she has been a constant and has kept those lines um, of communication open with our, with our businesses at a very critical um, time for them. And um, Dawn, I went on and on about him earlier, so you know, we're, we're very fortunate to, to have him here at the city. Um, also, I, I wanted to uh, give praises to one of my daughter's best friends, Sophie Martel. Um, she's uh, pretty much a, a Solidad High School um, soccer star. And um, she also plays uh, soccer for um, other leagues as well. Um, but even this early in the school year, she's the senior. She already got a scholarship and accepted to go to San Jose State um, university under their soccer uh, program. And she's also um, on our youth council. She's also one of the top ten academically for the seniors. Um, and, and she's just civically, civically engaged. And I just am really looking forward to when we start hearing from all, all our, our seniors, uh, high school seniors on you know, where they're going to college or they're not going to college and they choose a vocational, you know, vocational um, training or whatever it is. This is a, a very exciting time for them. So just wanted to give um, Sophie praises.
Okay, thank you. Um, Mayor Porten?
Yes, uh, thank you. Uh, staying on the planning commission uh, item. Um, I don't know if we had an opportunity to uh, praise and recognize or provide Javier Nieto with the resolution for his years of service. Did I miss that one or no? And, and it is appropriate of him giving up his time. And I know he had health issues as well, is his family in Spain. And uh, all-around good guy, businessman, uh, and also a father and avid socket soccer. He was such an excellent soccer player and coach here uh, for the high school as well. So I'd like to praise out to him for his dedication and his commitment and giving up his time and his wife Linda uh, for allowing us to use him and, and uh, be able to use his expertise uh, on our planning commission. Well, that's, that's my first.
Thank you so much. Um, Mayor Porten, for that. So we'll make a note to make sure that we get a resolution to him. And then also on the state title, I'll make a note for the senator also because you're right, he gave a lot of near the public service. So we need to recognize that. So thank you for, for making sure that we don't forget about that. Uh, Councilmember Gobernador?
Yeah, I just had one, but I wanna, I wanna um, uh, say thank you to Javier as well. And I for Sophie, did you say Sophie? She's gonna be a fellow, a fellow Spartan. I graduated from San Jose State University and praises for you guys. Uh, thank you Javier for all the years that you've been in that planning commission. And uh, I guess you're gonna be uh, watching the Real Madrid there more often now. And uh, for um, my prize directly is to the Solidad um, uh, uh, for Solidad for, what is the name of it? Solidad for city uh, voting rights, Solidad for voting rights committee. I think I'm saying it wrong. I'm still a little bit dizzy from the uh, anesthesia. Is anesthesia or anesthesia? Well, anesthesia then. Yeah. And um, for reaching uh, the goal, uh, they had um, they have uh, collected about a one thousand four hundred and five signatures of which the Monterey uh, uh, elections uh, office, Monterey County Elections Office actually verified eight hundred and sixty-two. So they um, they reached the goal of uh, for putting the referendum. Uh, thank you so much. I, I witnessed all the work that they were doing. Um, I wish I could have helped, but I, I, I work a lot on uh, various times. So thank you so much for all the work that you guys did. Um, only in twenty-three days you guys did that. That is amazing. And I wanna thank especially all the cities, citizens, um, the businesses that, that helped, that helped them uh, accomplish that goal. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilmember Gobernador. Um, so for me, I just, I wanna start, I have a few too, but I wanna congratulate Dawn Wilcox as well and for a different reason. He will be graduating on Friday from Acknowledge and I'm a graduate of Acknowledge. And so the council having gone through it, I really would hope that you would consider it. Um, so congratulations, Dawn, in advance of your graduate, your graduation. Um, you know, economic impacts and learning all about how egg is really um, instrumental to our community and the history of that has been uh, was really enlightening. So congratulations for even everything that you do, taking the time to be part of that process and part of that class. Um, also on the Solidad for Voting Rights Committee, thank you to all the community members that um, let their voice heard and let the democracy really, you know, be part of what's in the forefront of us as local governments. That, this is what we're here for. Um, and so thank you to all the committee members for all the work that they did. I also wanna thank Megan and all the city staff or the Diablos. I got there at the tail end of it and sorry, I missed the beginning. Um, this is the first time I actually have ever seen, you know, from even, you know, being a council. Um, just the dynamics of what that meant to our community, the different, you know, uh, combinations of activities and then pairing that with the general plan to get feedback. I'm excited to read about the feedback that came out of that because I stopped it. An amazing job having their stations and getting feedback from the community in a very interactive and very positive way where there was a lot of dancing families and um, a lot of food and everything else. So thank you so much, um, Megan, for your leadership and making sure that that moved forward and um, excited to see more of that before us. Um, and then also just, um, again, just, I mean, I didn't have Javier Nieto, but I wanna thank him now that uh, council member, um, Mayor Porten Jimenez brought him up for his years of service as well. Um, and also a shout out to Sophie. So Sophie and my son played soccer together when they were younger in the white. So I know Sophie since she was like five years old. Um, so I wanna do a shout out to Sophie, but also to Yoko and JP Martel, her parents that have been really just, you know, instrumental with both of the, both of their children. And um, you know, shout out to you all for such a great job, um, and supporting Sophie and her endeavors. And so with that, then we will move on to future agenda items. Oh, city manager report, okay.
Um, so I did wanna let um, the council know and you received an email um, regarding the referendum. Um, we received, I, I'm losing track of time yesterday, I believe, um, the, the notification um, that they achieved the threshold um, for the item to be put on the ballot. Um, which actually means that um, on December sixth, this um, issue will come back to city council to determine um, if you want it to move forward to the ballot or if you want to rescind the ordinance. And um, Mike could probably add a little bit. I might turn it over to Mike to see if there's anything else he wants to add about next steps and the.
No, I, I think that that, that actually encapsulates what's gonna happen on December sixth. We'll be bringing it forward to you for those, with those options. And then we're also, uh, we have started to uh, prepare something to publicize on the uh, the website and the, the Facebook page. Um, that also lets the public know that, that, that's what will be. and the, the Facebook page, um, that also lets the public know that, that, that's what will be taking place on the uh December sixth meeting. So we want public participation. We want folks who uh work on it or work against it to uh, to come to the meeting and participate and see the council's discussion on the same. So.
And um in the, the vein of elections, um, we also um are working hard to um let people know about um filling the vacancy and um issuing their candidate statements. Um, there is a cost that we also want people to be aware of. That's roughly about four hundred dollars. Three hundred and twenty-one dollars.
Yeah.
So it has, has gone up. Um, so we are working hard to have an elections landing page um to, to really have this information. But in the meantime, um, they should be uh reaching out to um the deputy city clerk if you, if you know of any candidates.
Megan, was it midnight for that? Or is it open already or?
Who is? December. We also have to place that on the website and also on the Facebook page, I believe, as well, that information.
Yeah, so we're working to, to really elevate that information for the public. I did also want to alert um you and the public that we do, we, um, thanks to Stephen um Chief uh Lupinback um and Jesus. Uh, they did set up an emergency information page. Um, there's a lot of great information out there. We'll probably be doing some um PR around that, so people can um know where to go. Um, and then I also wanted to let you know that um this is sort of leading into future agenda items, but that we will have a meeting on December twentieth. We have a lot of activity around um, a couple of um of items around the Solida marketplace. Um, we also have um some items that may, you see moving forward around affordable housing. And then um two other items real quick. Um, I'm trying to see if this is potentially possible to do some type of holiday banner. I, I think council really wants to activate Front Street. So if we can start even doing some little things like a banner program, um, staff is working on that. Um, I know that we talked about doing goal setting um in January. And I actually, we have a new staff member um assigned to finance, who's also helping on some special projects. And Jesus, uh, also Jesus, yeah, yeah, and it's, um, but because of the vacancy, um, I'm thinking, and maybe this item can be brought back for this direction that maybe we want to postpone it until the new person um comes on board. But that's a, that's a question that I can bring back for future direction. And then la- uh lastly, or two last things, we'll have a subcommittee meeting, Housing Affordable Subcommittee meeting on the twenty-seventh. And there will be a listening session on November twenty-ninth, Coalition for Homeless Services Providers um about some uh funding for homelessness and how to best deploy it. So encouraging the public to, to attend.
Thank you, Megan. Um, a question on the holiday banner. I know we had the lights on Front Street. And then last time when we had the Christmas parade, we also had the lighting of the Christmas tree and um at Chavez Park. So can we make sure that happens? So I don't know if we working on that, but that.
Yeah, we were waiting for the authorization, because it was done sort of in conjunction with the holiday parade. So the fact that you took action today, we can authorize that moving forward.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so with that, then we will move on to future agenda items. And I'll start with councilmember Coverd.
Uh, no, nothing. Thank you.
Okay, um, Mayor Potem.
Yes, uh, just one item. Could we get a report on the Youth Violence Prevention Program and the progress of it? How many clients have been helped, uh, expensive, uh, expended uh to this point um with that program? Can we get some feedback on that, please?
Yes, um, I believe it's been calendared. Yeah, it might, we, we, I already asked for that. I would have been this meeting, but because things got moved, we pushed it to the status.
Thank you.
Okay, so councilwoman Corale.
Um, yes, I just, um, since we were talking about the general plan and the Dia de los Muertos, I would really love to see um a presentation, and that might be on the works already as well, but a presentation. I know it was successful, but I would love to hear um the, the feedback that we were able to obtain from the surveys that we did. And then maybe account of how many persons attended. And then the other thing I had is more of a question, I think. Um, the, I was told that the Planning Commission is not going to have joint meetings with the city council. Is that correct? I thought I overheard that.
Yes, um, I think to both save um consultant money because of the uh, some things that they had to do to uh address some of the questions with the briefing book. Um, we decided to, we will eventually for the kind of main ones have a joint meeting. But for some of the feedback, we decided to keep it uh separate, so that we can save on uh the consultant costs. And focus some more on the technical piece.
I'm really confused right now.
Yeah, so um we will achieve points where it makes sense, where there's like a, like an action. Um, we will, but just on the kind of feedback loop. We're going to keep it separate to save on the consulting cost. And we can share with each body what the feedback was.
Is there always a consultant? When I, I only got to attend, I think maybe two meetings, because I've only been here for a year. But is there always a consultant that we have to pay when we meet with them?
Yes.
So that's, but good, for clarity, though, it's only for the general plan process, right? Because other than that, we had joint, I mean, we don't really have joint meetings where we have this kind of, you know, um, dynamics where we're giving feedback on the housing element or the general.
Yeah. I will have to say that in my experience, but it could, it could be common in Solida, I don't know. Having joint sessions with council and planning commission is extremely unusual. That's just my experience, like in all of the years until I came here.
Welcome to Solida.
Yeah.
But we only, at least from I, when I've been here, the only reasons that we've done the housing, the joint ones have been, I mean, we don't typically meet jointly to discuss because their, their role is different than ours. But the only reason that we've done it has been now because of the housing element and the general plan. And then when we did the vision for the housing container, but other than that, I don't think, we don't have regular meetings with them on a jointly basis. Not since I've been here for the past, since twenty sixteen.
Yeah, so I mean, for, to save, mainly the main reason is to save costs. But to, to allow the, the, both of you to have more time to provide the feedback. We, we're going to move forward in that direction, unless you want to direct me otherwise. But I think it'll, it'll result in everyone having more opportunity for feedback and.
Yeah, I mean, I would, I, I don't think it's necessary every time, but I think definitely agree that there are times when it is beneficial to be with them so that we could, you know, kind of shoot ideas off each other or be able to resolve things quicker.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you. Okay. Um, so we are in future agenda items? Okay, customer recovery, he didn't have any? Okay, so um, I don't have, I just, for me, I just an update, Megan, on the party updates. I know I asked, you know, it's, I know the egg season is out and they're in, in the, you're a valley now, they're not here. But I just, I've never got an update, so I just want to get an update on where we at with that. And, and this is not um priority either, but I do want to make sure it doesn't fall off the radar. It's just the process for naming of the streets. And I know we, I've been asked by some, by different count, uh, residents, I want to make sure I respond to them. Um, provide a response to them on that. And then um I just want to let you know, and so the council knows as of right now, I will not be um attending physically. On the December sixth meeting, I will be on travel with work, but I will be participating virtually. And I will let you know the location of where I'm going to be on that December sixth meeting. So perfect. I just want to make sure you know ahead of time. Okay, and with, with that, then we will, um, we, I want, before we adjourn, I just want to say happy Thanksgiving to our staff and to our community. And we won't be having another meeting until December sixth, so I hope everybody enjoys our holiday season. Enjoy time with family and friends and happy Thanksgiving again. And with that, I will adjourn this meeting.